Just swipe it.
Swipe it or touch your swipe.
Or just press the button. Hit the button, it doesn't get recorded. Just here. She don't actually.
Oh, no, yeah, no, yeah, okay. Gotta push the button. All right, well, thank you, everyone, for being here. We like to go ahead and convene this meeting, this work meeting, and we've convened here to discuss the Museum of Rexburg, the Flood Museum, and those kind of things. And we've invited our Arts Director Jed Platt and our Museum Director Alicia, or curator, I guess is the proper term, right? To be here and talk with us about the museum. We'd like to have a presentation about that and then some discussion on which way we're gonna go and appreciate Commissioner Mendenhall being here with us tonight. And other than the fact that with you here, we can't badmouth the county as much, but here to make sure that doesn't get out of hand. All right, that's okay. We're here to have Frank discussions and we welcome Frank as well, right? Okay, Alicia, go ahead and take it away.
Well, we appreciate just your guys' time to be able to talk about the museum. So this was in your packet, so I'll just kind of go through some of the slides. If you want to at any time ask questions or have insights or anything, just please go ahead and stop me. So we have been archiving the collection, which means we're going through it. And each item, and we're taking a photo of it, we're giving it a number, we're giving it a tag, and then we're packing, or if we can, if it's small enough, we're packing it, we're packing it away. So we have, as of Friday, we have archived, that number has gone up significantly because my team was amazing on, over the weekend. But as of Friday, we had archived over 6,000 items and have packed almost, as of today, 3,500 items. So and that's been in the last year that we've really done all of that. Each of the artifacts have been, that we have a donation slip for. We don't always have donation slips for the items that we were given because a lot of them were lost during the flood or just over transitions. And so if we know what they are, we've tagged their record with Rexburg, Sugar City, or Madison County, so that we know which location they came from. These, they're based off the addresses of the donors. And if the donor, so if the donor was from Rexburg or Sugar City, we put Rexburg or Sugar City. If the donor was from outside of those city limits of Rexburg or Sugar City, we put Madison County. So thank you. So these are just examples of those tags. So we have a Madison County tag for this desk that was donated by Bertie Davis. And then we have a Rexburg tag of a Stork Bell that was from the Lester Peterson collection, and then a picture of a a claim from the Madison County during the flood. It was like a claim record. So that has Madison County, Rexburg, and Sugar City all tied to it because it's from the flood. And we've also marked all the flood items as well. So we can easily, with the software, we can go in, we can click on a tag, and it'll bring up all of the items that have Madison County, or it'll bring up all the items that have Rexburg or Sugar City or Teton Dam flood, or whatever tag we've given it. So we can easily pull those up. So is there any questions about that? Okay, so these are the immediate needs and questions that we have for the museum right now. We need the main question is where are we going to store the artifacts when it comes time for them to be removed out of the tabernacle when the HVAC is coming in? We need to remove the the artifacts. So where are they going to be stored? Should the collection be divided up? That's been something we've talked about in different meetings is do we split it up and some of it goes in this location, some goes in this location, and some goes here just because we don't have the space? So is that something that we should do, or should we try and keep it all together? We need space for a flood exhibit. Next year is the 50th anniversary of the Teton Dam flood. And we really need to have a place to be able to do an exhibit, to be able to showcase and to be able to commemorate that. And then what should the, what should happen with the museum once the collection is outpacked? Like what? What is our path forward? Until a new place can be found. And then what is the future of the Historical Society? And we have members of the Historical Society here tonight. So if you have questions, they can probably help answer those. So this is some of the items we have packed. So on the right there are all the small items. We have them in those yellow boxes are items, and then the big boxes are smaller boxes with smaller items and then bigger items in there. And then that is the Flood Room where we used to show the documentary, and we have placed all the big items that we can in there. There are still more in the back. So for storage space, we're looking about 200, 2,000 to 3,000 square feet. And we're about 70% done. So we feel like we could really, that's the space that we need is about 2,000. And it's mostly those big items that are, take up a large amount of space. So, and then if we were to have a new exhibit space somewhere, like for a new museum, that's the 3,000 to 4,000. And the storage area that we have, or the place we have, needs to be, we need to be able to access it. So we can't just put the, the boxes and things in a big, we could put them in a big like trailer space, but it would be really hard for us to access them if we were going to do a display. So we'd have to find a way to make it still accessible and easy to get things out when needed. And so then I just shared four different exhibit ideas that we could do in different locations that we have tagged all these items. So this is called "The Day in the Life of a Frontier Woman." So it's basically that we honor all the women who first came here and all the roles that they played. A lot of them were not just wives, they were also shopkeepers and businesswomen. We include stories about Nettie Gardner, who helped run the Rexburg Standard Journal for many years. She actually helped manage it. And about the midwives who helped deliver over 2,000 babies and who would not leave the husbands alone with those babies and the wives until the house was was her level of clean, which was pretty immaculate. And so there was just, and then that they became schoolteachers and helped establish Bannock Academy that became BYU Idaho, and they later became postmasters in different things, roles that women didn't usually hold during that time. So we would have really liked to tell that story. Another one is the Rexburg Military History. We have a bell and some artifacts from the USS Rexburg. No one really knows why the ship was named the USS Rexburg, but it was a battleship, it was a hospital ship that was used during World War II and helped save over 9,000 lives over by Okinawa. And so that is on loan to us from the Navy. We'd like to do a display about that and include different things about uniforms and the different veterans that served here. Oh, and we also have a Civil War coat. I don't know if Mike read that, that that Mike had it, that Councilmember Walker let us borrow for a time loan to us, so. And then we have this exhibit, which I'm really kind of excited about. It's called "What's in a Name?" And it's about how the name of Rexburg was changed to Kentuck for the space of about five years in the early history. And that this was done as a way to, because members of the church weren't allowed to vote during that time, and so they kind of changed the name of the town to kind of punish the town. And so it just kind of talks a little bit about that and why our name was changed and some of the things that we could include. And then we could tell the story of the settlement of Rexburg. And the other, and just kind of do a frontier story with that. And then talk about how the Kentuck kind of led to the starting of the Bannock Academy. And, and talk about the history of Bannock Academy became BYU Idaho. So and how that kind of worked.
I got an email from a lady, this spent a couple of years ago, that felt like we really should change the name of Rexburg to something else. So.
There we go. I actually have a map that already has it on it, so. Was done anyways. I can go, I can give you a lot of history, and I'm sure Louis could back me up on it, but but yeah, it, so, but. And then this, this one is about a children's exhibit that would be about the flood. So it's called "Just Add Water." And it tells the history of, of the history of water in Madison County, Rexburg. And we could use, we would talk about John Poole and how he talked about how he went, and he actually talked to the church leadership to have the people come here to settle. And, and then how it led to all the canals being dug and the people coming here. And all the work they did to bring water, and then they had dry farming and irrigation systems put in. And then later that led to the creation of the Teton Dam, which led to, as we know, too much water. And so, and then we would include in our displays, there would be things that would talk about agriculture and farming and how our area is rich. And that we had in, in this area that we at one time were the world's capital for wheat and potatoes. So just, we could tell a lot of cool stories. We could talk about the gold rush that happened for a week here when they found a gold nugget in the well and it turned out to be fake. And we would do this with, we'd make it an interactive children's exhibit with this water table that I had a class up on campus design out for me, and they gave me specs that we could do if we were pretty cheap. And then we could also do panning for gold, irrigation piping on a wall that they could line up, and a touch and smell area, and puzzles, and craft areas, and different, those are just the start of of our ideas for, or have a children's exhibit. And this is really where I feel like we need to go. There needs to be a place that kids can go, and that now we don't have Kidsburg, that there is not a place for kids to go and to play in the winter. And to be able to interact and to be able to learn and to grow. And to learn about their community and what brings us together. And so if we were to do anything, this is what I would suggest, is that we would do something that was interactive and that would bring in revenue because people would not just come once, they would come multiple times because their kids could play. And then this is just a list of things that museums do for community. And there's this list there about preservation of history and culture, education and learning, cultural enrichment, community engagement, public programming, inclusive spaces, and economic impact. And on the next slide, I talk about how so this is from the 2023 Logwoods. And so it states that 13% of the people who come to Idaho to do overnight trips come to do museums. So that's, and with the Yellowstone, the Yellowstone Highway, people coming up to see Yellowstone, it, we would be missing out on opportunity not to have.
Wait, say that again, 13% of people that, what now?
That are, they're spending, that are coming to Idaho to do overnight trips are, part of the things they come to do are to visit museums.
To go to a museum?
They're looking for museums to go to. And young people, that we always go to museums, but my, you know, my kids are kind of but about a year ago, we started tracking when people, we made a contact log. So these are just some of those that people have emailed, messaged, or called. So we've had nine phone calls that we started counting in December. We've had seven voicemails, seven direct social media, 17 emails. And that's 46 total conversations logged. And then and there's been more. Those are just the ones I logged. The, those aren't all the ones that people have come up to me in different locations and asked me. So. And these are the questions that people ask. Is the museum still closed? What is happening to the tabernacle? Where is the museum moving? When are you opening? And we charted it, so if they were local or out of town, they wanted to know if we could still watch the documentary. Do we have any kind of flood exhibit? Do we still do field trips or tours? And then the most popular, can you use this building? Can you use that building? So and those are the, we always, well, those are always slated for other projects, usually, so. So this is the future vision that we'd like. Our current mission statement for the museum is we strive to connect the present with the past through preserving and protecting the collections of artifacts and stories that are reflected in Rexburg's history and the story of the Teton Dam flood. So that is our mission, is to tell the stories and to connect the past with the present. So if we were to have a new museum, the ideal, like the absolute perfect would be 5,000 to 7,000 square feet so that we could have room to have storage and to have a large exhibit space to be able to do those interactive exhibits on a bigger scale, to be able to incorporate Rexburg. So I have a children's area and then also have like a display about Rexburg or Madison County or different things that we could rotate in and out. And then these are just some new possible museum experiences that we could offer. Some of these we could do. So we have summer camps that we could, we could start offering Polar Express Day, Christmas in July. Offer workshops and classes, Founder's Day, a movie night outside cemetery walks or tours. I might not want to do that. I might get spooked, but. Scavenger hunt with clues to historical buildings, which we are kind of already doing that. Jed and Ryan have set up a, like a Easter egg hunt where people are going to see if they can find, is it related to the historical buildings? To the historical buildings, and they have to find out a clue, and then they get a dozen eggs. Maybe. As a dozen eggs, if they win. So, and then a mystery night, can you solve this mystery from Rexburg's past? Or a trivia night, are you smarter than a Rexburg fifth grader? So. Which, they are pretty smart, I don't know. And then these are just links to more information if you want. And again, this is in your packet, so you can review it if you'd like. So, any feedback or?
Questions? Thank you, that presentation, that was very interesting. Is there questions for?
Alicia, you, you talked about these exhibit ideas. "The Day in the Life of a Frontier Woman," Rexburg Military History, et cetera. If we did divide those out and had displays in various locations, how much square footage for those displays would you need?
It kind of, well, so they can be as big or as small, but if you want them to be exhibit spaces, that probably needs probably about the size of the Flood Room, so 800 square feet. And then you can always make it smaller and just do a display, which is the case. So it just depends, it's always better to have an exhibit as we've talked, as I've talked about, because it brings in more people. If you just have a case, people walk by it and they don't stop. But if you have an exhibit, it has different points to stop at and to look at and to engage with. There, there is a difference between a display and an exhibit. An exhibit is more, it has different displays within it. So it's, it's wide reaching, whereas a display is like a case that has has like brief history in it.
What's our timetable now to get you out of the tabernacle?
I think that really depends on the HVAC.
Do you know when to schedule?
Yeah, so the way we're going to budget that now, because we won't know on that grant until possibly June, I believe it was. So we, we're gonna move that budget into fiscal year '26 and discuss it during the budget meetings in May. Which means that we probably wouldn't start construction on that until at least October.
Of '26.
No.
By '25.
Twenty-five on the eight.
Other questions and comments?
Matt, is that grant? For sure?
No, and that's why we're, we gotta wait and see if we actually get it. But it's been submitted, I mean, it's we just won't know until, it's, I think it was either the last week of May or the first week of June.
But is it one that is on tap to be? I mean.
This is a state grant, isn't it?
Oh, is it?
Well, it's the Community Development Block Grant.
Which is federal money administered through the state, right?
Yeah. Yeah, they, I mean, the grant administrator felt like that fund was pretty secure going forward. And I mean, they do this, all right, that's what they do for a living. They feel like this is a great project, especially where we've had, we've been setting aside for it, we have the design for it. And then we also have contributions raised by the public as well. And so there's a lot of good contributing factors.
So that helps with the HVAC, but it doesn't really solve our museum problem.
Yeah.
So, yeah, go ahead, Councilman.
For storage locations?
For any of what year?
So we have looked at in our historic building meetings, we've talked about several different locations. Am I okay to say different locations that we've talked about? We've talked about the Pump House, but the Pump House wasn't going to work out. We've talked about the
The Pump House is over.
On Second East.
Oh, you mean that one?
That Pump House. We talked, but that wasn't going to work out. And then we talked about the affluent, the affluent building. But that was going to be too small, and we'd have to order a container to contain everything else. We've looked, Jed and I have looked at different businesses in town, but there's not really a budget to purchase a building or rent a building. So we're trying, we're just looking for some direction at this point. We've looked at buying containers, but the containers are $8,000 to $9,000 that we need, if not more. So we just, we don't really have that in our budget. So we know that budget is kind of tight right now.
Do you need climate controlled?
Climate controlled would be best, but it doesn't have to be climate controlled. Being mouse proof and insect proof would be more important.
So how many, how many containers would you need, like cargo containers?
I think we thought two.
Two? Yeah, I was, I was thinking, I mean, you can get the 40 footer, you can get two 20 footers, right? And weren't you kind of thinking the 20 footers, just because they're easier to get?
Is that the one that was 8,000, was the 20 footer? Yeah.
So. So, yeah. The one thing that I will tell you, because, because we, we talked about kind of what to do a few years ago, like I came and Jed was here, we did a presentation. And we talked about the possibility of actually using and putting an exhibit here in the hatchery space. But what's happened there is we, we really thought that they would either want to get out of their contract just because their circumstances were changing. Or that we could maybe negotiate to use part of that space. But they've really went a different direction, and they've honored their contract. They've continued to pay their rent. And so they have that through, we decided that through August of 2026. And so that's why we didn't make a move to put it there. You know, there are still some options. If, I mean, like we, the mayor and I have talked a little bit about, do you do like the flood, like you've got that wall over there that talks about the timeline and has all the pictures? Do you do that down this hallway? And maybe do permanent fixtures back here for the flood aspect? And then eventually, when that hatchery opens up, then you could start to do an exhibit there. So that you're, you're really utilizing space that you already own and not bringing another building on.
So Alicia, what, what happens, I mean, the HVAC is not going to take forever. If we got the grant and construction started in October, we're looking at reoccupying the building, what, in six months?
Oh, hopefully not that long. I think one of the issues, though, is we're doing it in phases. And so the HVAC project itself is not going to do the remodel in the basement. And so you're gonna have, that basement's gonna be somewhat torn up, if you will, right? And so there's still gonna have to be another phase of remodel that would have to come after.
And the bathrooms that we want to put down there are going where the storage is right now. So we wouldn't be able to move the storage back in there and still have display space. The display space that we are using right now, the floor, would have to become the storage.
I guess what I'm getting at is is it, is it something that, are we talking about a temporary solution here? Are we talking about a permanent solution? I mean, do we have to, we have to figure long term that we're gonna be out of the tabernacle, or are we gonna be going back in?
I don't think the plan is to go back in because there's no space there. There won't be space there after the new bathrooms go in downstairs.
The idea has been to try to find somewhere else and not go back.
And, and in truth, we have outgrown that space. We have more artifacts now than we did in 1980 when the museum started there. And it's really hard for us to rotate through displays. And to, and to keep the museum active and to keep it so that people want to come see. It's really hard to do that when we don't have storage space to move in and out large items. And, and being down in a basement is not, we love the tabernacle, but it's really hard for us to get traffic. People go to the library every day and don't know that the museum's there, or even that the tabernacle's there, even though they park in front of it.
Yeah, I mean, from, from my point of view, we have a beautiful historic building that we've spent a lot of money on and we're continuing to, to improve it, and is, is there any thought at all of repurposing some of the, even the upstairs of the building? I don't know, I, it's been a long while since I've been in there, but I'm just wondering if there's any way it just lends itself to a museum, to having some space in there for a museum because of its historic nature.
I think the, I think the initial phases would be to put a venue space down where the museum is right now to make that a venue space that people could rent out. And then that we are planning to have a tabernacle exhibit display space there that talk about the tabernacle and the different pieces, we have pieces from the history of the tabernacle we'd have on display there. But to tell the stories that we need to, we probably, more effectively, we would need at least another storage space. If not, yeah, another exhibit place.
Quick question. Just when it comes to the short term problem we have with storage, has anybody spoken with the school district to see if they have anything? I mean, they've got the large, what used to be the junior high there. I have no idea what they're storing inside there. Is there any space?
Doug Ladel, we work in the basement of Footright Free Clinic, and I was asking Travis Schwab about when he opened these upstairs and so forth, we're talking about Historical Society documents or iron boxes. He said, actually, they have every room upstairs filled with their curriculum and other items to go into the district. And I didn't want this always, so I couldn't affirm what he was saying. He could have been just saying that we're not an option to use, to start using in our school district areas. But we do have access downstairs in the training, but that, that clinic is pretty well, and gives them all open spaces that we can we can use, or so, that's helpful to the community.
Okay. Because I was curious, because it's right there.
Right, it's right there.
I would have thought maybe they had some space.
So for temporary storage, can you use shipping containers?
We could if we had a location to move, to put the shipping containers.
Well, we could definitely, we can find that. We could have a place fine to put them. I mean, I know I purchased two of them for animal shelter, about $3,500 a piece, a 20 footer.
I think Jed priced them, and they were 8,000 to 9,000. Do you know where you?
Was that for the 40, though?
That's almost double. I paid about 3,500.
That was for the 40? Okay.
Forty, yeah, that's, I'd say that's probably the 40. The 20 footer's about 3,500. And they are mouse proof, bug proof type thing. It would help for temporary.
Right. My only fear would be that they're put in a storage container and then forgotten. So that, that's the only, when you have a storage container, that usually you put things in there that you don't always remember that you have. So that, that would just be a concern that I know I would have, and I think some of the public would have.
And Matt, we don't have any type of budget that we're looking at in the future, saving up for a facility, right?
Not specifically.
We could take the 2 million we got for the police station.
Don't pit me against the police.
You know, one, and I, we've talked about this a little, I don't know if it works, but, you know, you could potentially use the affluent building for some of the documents, because it is a controlled space, right? You can have an AC, you can have a heater, a heater in there, and then potentially do a, a Conex box for some of the stuff that's not. As difficult to manage with the elements, right? I mean, it's just an option, right?
Yeah.
Where, did you say?
Well, you could put that, I mean, you could put that out there by the affluent building, you could put it out in the secure areas by the. Public Works, I mean, there's, there's lots of options, I think, where you could put it. They'd probably want it close to each other.
So, another, another question I have.
It's, 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 it's just.
Right past the transfer station.
Yes, yeah. It's what we used to, it used to be part of the sanitation system, but it's not anymore, we don't use it anymore.
So we're looking at trying to build a new police department, if we end up getting that through and building a new one, would the old police department be repurposed possibly for? A museum?
It's a thought.
I mean, it's a great location, it might be.
On Main Street, yeah.
On Main Street, but I'm just throwing that out.
Yeah, I mean, it's definitely, it's definitely in our plans to sell as part of the money that we would. Then tell the public that we're gonna put back into the new station, at least that's, it's in all of my financial analysis to sell it, but. But that's up to you guys.
What was the idea of maybe what we could generate from that to go towards the police station?
Well, it would, to be determined, I think we've been putting in about eight hundred thousand.
How many square feet is it?
It is, uh, I can't remember if it's, I think it's eleven thousand something.
What about the hatchery area? I know obviously we don't, we wouldn't, uh, have access to that until August of twenty six, how many square feet is that?
About fifteen hundred.
So it's, it's very tight, we, you could only do.
And then you'd have to find everything where to put everything that's in the hatchery.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, the other thing to consider though is. You know, if we don't renew that lease and that opens up in August, then really it's not just the hatchery space, it's all of that space that. Potentially becomes available, and there's a couple larger rooms behind that as well.
It, I will say, it would probably not be a good storage location, cause trying to get a piano back over in there might be a little difficult.
Where, where at?
Uh, in the offices of the hatchery space, like.
Oh, back there?
It'd be kind of hard to get some of those big items that are, I mean, we have some fourteen foot skis that are handmade, so I'm just trying to picture.
Anybody know anybody that's got an empty building that they would donate space or rent very, very cheap? Anyone? I don't think it's, I don't think it's empty, I think they store stuff in there, but. I don't know if. Mm-hmm, yeah. So, yeah, I don't know, I mean, I.
Over on College Avenue.
I think, you know, there's several solutions, I wouldn't say any of them are ideal. But, uh, but there's that, those ideas. Uh, Alicia and I walked around here in the hallway and stuff a couple, after the last council meeting, and we talked about, you know, could we put? Displays out here in the foyer and could we put, I think the flood museum, the flood timeline mural on that wall out here would be, would be. Would be okay, would be, it'd make that hallway a little more interactive, it is a long hallway. Jed's been doing a good job of getting art, uh, pieces put out there that's made it a lot more interesting to walk up and down that hallway. So I don't know, for the, for the time being, um, I mean, I. I would be maybe interested in seeing what we could do that way, just to. Get, get some of that out of there and, and get it out on display and things like that, we'd have to figure out a way to. Either lock up the building at night, or, or somehow make things a little bit more secure.
Mr. Mayor, my, my, I guess, one of my big concerns is that with this anniversary that's coming up. Uh, what is that, is that next?
Next year, next summer.
Year.
Yeah.
Um, I think we'd be really remiss if we didn't have some sort of a display of, of the flood. Somewhere in town, would it be possible to, to move a, a night, a display into the, um. The romance?
So we have, we have a small display at the, at the romance already about the flood. But it's really hard to do things at the romance because that's a venue space that people rent out, and they don't always want the, the whole lobby full of items.
Could we block that, you know, a couple of months out for that, that time just around the?
Oh, well, around the flood, we probably.
Around the flood and bring it, cause I think that we really need to have something. If we're celebrating the flood, we need to have a display that people can see and. Would be perfect then.
Mr. Ladle?
Uh, the Standard Journal Building, the old one, can Jason Winerker now owns that building? Anybody opposed to about renting?
I don't, I don't think it's vacant, is it? That didn't, isn't he running a couple of businesses out of there?
At the, the end piece is vacant.
Oh, the end piece is vacant?
Jed and I toured that one, and it would be really hard for a museum because that's not wheelchair accessible. It's not, we could maybe possibly store things there, but it, yeah, it. It was almost a year ago that we toured it, so, but I remember that, that there was like a ledge that we'd have to figure out how to get. To be able to access, and the doors are kind of thin, so.
Is there any possibility of using any of the facilities at the, uh, fairgrounds, partner with the county a little bit?
I would turn the time over.
I mean, I'm just trying to brainstorm empty spaces and I have no idea what's, might be stored there. Or what use there might be already planned by the county in early June. But again, if, if, if we're still working on trying to get a permanent space for the museum. And we want that fiftieth anniversary to be super cool, maybe. One of those spaces could be used temporarily for that. Okay.
It's, it's not a beautiful building, but it is a building, right? Yeah, that's really about, that's the only thing really out there that even would have space available, I, I think, isn't it? I mean, you can't do it in the arena, it's dirt floor and. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, so.
Well, I wonder too, um, we've talked about this before, but the old seminary building, they're on Main Street.
The, the nineteen thirty seven one?
Right.
Okay, the, the stucco, yeah.
And I know it, it may not be ideal long term, but maybe short term. Uh, before acquisition happens, or it changes hands, or demolition occurs, maybe that could be the last building to go. And it could house a good chunk of the museum. And I don't know, Jed, you've, we walked through it, I don't know if, I, I think there was a contractor there. And I don't know if they put a dollar amount to what it would take to get it functional.
Yeah, but those are historical.
We're not keeping those.
Structurally, it looked good, the electrical, the plumbing, that might need some work. So maybe if, if we agree, we could approach the school district on that. Say for a couple of years, could we make use of that building? Um, and could you find another place for the grid kids' equipment? And I don't know, Commissioner Mendenhall, it might go, go better if it were a city-county approach to the school district to make use of that building.
Yes, please.
Possibility for, for a focus on a flood commemoration.
For, for next year, yeah. Yeah, that's, that's a thought, I mean, I, that, you're right, that, that is a kind of a cool building, I mean, every time I go over there for one of your meetings, I end up. Spending a little time walking down the hallways and looking at the pictures, and I think that's, that's pretty neat to be able to see that. Um, so, if that's, you know, if there's room there, I don't know, well, I guess you're talking about if you, if you did. A little bit more of the hallways and maybe into the commissioner chambers there. Might be a possibility. Okay, well, maybe something, um. Let's see, I was just, I made some notes here, I was just going through them to see. I think one of the things that, one of the questions you posed right at the start of this was.
Deborah, could you bring those question, the, back up to like, it's like the second one?
What about, what about the historical society, and we have three members, esteemed members of the historical society here with us.
It's the number, it's like at the very top.
So I guess that's, that's a question that I would, um. Maybe pose back to, to you, you gentlemen, is that, uh, do, do we have? Uh, historical soc- society members that you feel like are willing to kind of carry on the work of the historical society and, and keep that going? I know in a, in some places where I stop, like even in just little dinky towns like Hagerman, Idaho, I stopped in there and they've got a little. An old building on Main Street there that's, uh, that's a museum, has the Hagerman horse in there, if you know what that is, it's a fossilized horse, but. Uh, I guess it's world famous, but, um, anyway, it, it was run by their county historical society. And, uh, the people that were working in there were volunteers and, so, um, I don't know, I guess. Maybe we ought to open it up to you, one of, whoever would like to take a minute and talk about the historical society and what you feel. The future of it is and, you know, how, how we can help and all that kind of thing.
Just give you a quick little history, the historical society started in nineteen sixty five. When a group of businessmen here in town got together and organized and, uh, drew up a, a list of. Things, goals we had and incorporated the, the society. And, uh, after the flood, when the church decided to tear down the tabernacle. The historical society and city members formed a committee. To see if they could acquire the tabernacle from the church, and also to see if they could get a grant. And they got a grant of fifty thousand dollars from the Department of the Interior to buy that building from the church. With the idea that there would be a museum in the basement and, uh, uh, community hall upstairs. And, uh, the two main people on that committee were Dwayne Wilding, who was a businessman here in town, and Mayor John Porter. And they were the pushers that got the grant and got the building acquired. The museum opened there as the Teton Flood Museum in nineteen eighty three. And the historical society was running the museum up until, I don't remember the exact date. In the early nineties, when the city, uh, took over the operation of the museum and the historical society. Moved into the east side of the annex building. Where we have housed a library. Uh, the paper documents and things like that that come in, come into that library and the hard artifacts go into the museum. I was really concerned when, uh, Jill Spencer retired from running the museum. Uh, and Alicia took over, that concern lasted for about a day. She's been dedicated to the history of the community and has done a excellent job with the. Uh, museum. I don't know if you know, but, uh, that museum was rated as one of the first class museums in the state of Idaho. By the Idaho Association of Museums and all of their peers.
Lewis, can I ask you a question on, oh, this historical society was running the museum and then. Why, so why did, why did the city take it over? Was, were you having trouble getting volunteers to work there, or?
Well, we had a, Bonnie Curtis worked there for years, if you remember her.
Yeah.
And, uh, I think the city felt like they could run it better. And which, in my opinion, they did, because the historical society at that time was beginning to lose members. Not just here in Rexburg, but all over the country.
Yeah.
Became one of the things that was hard to get volunteers to, to come and serve. Uh, at this point, the historical society is a hundred percent supportive of the museum and. And Alicia calls on us from time to time to answer questions and, uh. We assist in any way we can. I am encouraged to hear you talking about short time. Storage and not doing away with the museum idea completely. Because Rexburg is the size of a community that needs a museum. The kids that come here, come to the museum quite often, and the school classes come there all, every spring for, for, uh. Trips.
Yeah.
Any other questions you want to ask?
No, Eric. Lewis, um, has there, has there historically been, been funding available? Through the, through the historical society or through state funding? Earmark for, for historical preservation, mu- museums, that sort of thing, are you aware?
The county has given us an assessment for years and years. But when the membership dwindled about three, four years ago. Uh, I terminated the county's support because we aren't spending the money. And, uh, so as of now, we have a little money coming in from, uh, our Teton Flood. Grant reimbursement for the museum we had at that time.
Yeah.
And it's been in the bank.
Do you know where that funding that came from the county came from? Did that come just from the, just from the county, in their general funds?
The tax rolls.
Wasn't something from, that came from the state, or?
No, no. We've occasionally gotten a grant. And there is a organization that gets its money from the license plate fees. The red, white, and blue license plate fees go into a historical restoration, so we have gotten grants. To restore, for instance, the windows in the tabernacle and, uh, historic buildings.
Okay. But no, no ongoing types of funding that's available, that we're just not aware of?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. Is there any other questions for Mr. Clements? Thank you, we appreciate all that you've done for the community and for all these years and to help keep the historical society going. Appreciate that, um, yes.
I just piggyback on Lewis's comments, there is a group of us who are.
Do you mind coming up to the microphone just for the record?
Just to piggyback on Lewis's comments, there's a group of us who are very desirous to make sure the historical society is established or reestablished. And we continue to, to, uh, maintain his library and not lose those documents in the storage. We're trying to make sure we can, uh, assist with Alicia, making sure there's proper places for those to temporarily be stored. But also just, we want to see tours down Main Street in Rexburg, we want to see firesides about the history of Rexburg. So there's a group of us who want to make sure we, uh, can keep the history of Rexburg being told to our tourists and our youth. And our new citizens moving in all the time to be. citizens moving in all the time to be in Rexburg. So that's why we're here to say we're not leaving just because the museum's being stored. Okay?
Okay, thank you. Yeah, there I mean, there's been every possibility under the sun floated. And one of those has been, do we just get out of the museum business and and, you know, that's that's been been one of the ideas floated. But I this is just personally, I feel like it's important to maintain the history of the community in some fashion. And I think I think museums are are important, but they they are difficult to come up with funding for and maintain places and the costs involved and stuff because there's 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 not a lot of funding available. I do like the ideas that Alicia had as far as some different programs that we could do that would try to bring in more revenue and keep people interested in bringing them back. Of course, the catch to that is we've got to have a place to do it, right? A good place to do it. And that's what costs the money. So so it it's a dilemma. We've talked about it a lot, and I don't think we're going to solve it here tonight either. But thank you for that presentation, Alicia. I appreciate that. And I think it's I think it's good for the council to understand, you know, what we've got and where we're at and, you know, the dilemma we're facing so that hopefully we can all be thinking about solutions and and ideas and things that we we might be able to do. So. Okay, well, thank you very much. We will, I think we'll go ahead and unless there's any other, excuse me, questions or comments, I think we will adjourn or at least recess this meeting. I guess adjourn the work meeting and then we will start up with our city council meeting here directly. Let's take a what time is it? I lost my put my phone in the wrong pocket here. Six twenty three. Yeah, let's take a five minute, I guess, a seven minute recess. City Council starts at six thirty. So. Okay. Do prop that door. Oh, well, I guess it's because of the sun, right? Yeah, okay. Thank you.
He just took a five minute recess. Man, another day, two days of this.
We got it on the agenda.
Could be a guy called with the top. For some reason.
Same time of year.
Almost need shades to pull on.
Not a bad idea. Then you can keep those open and then. All right, here we go. Thank you, everybody, for being here. We appreciate your attendance. We just finished up a work meeting talking about the Museum of Rexburg and the artifacts that are there. And right now, just for your information, that all of the artifacts are being boxed up and catalogued as we try to search for a new place to to house the museum. So we would ask if any of you know of any really good space that is free or cheap to rent. If you know of anything, please let us know. We'd be interested in finding out about that. We are doing a major remodel on the tabernacle and so the museum has got to be moved out. And we're actually looking for a new place that's a better location than the basement of the tabernacle for for that. So we'd we'd love if anybody's got any input on that or any ideas for us. We're certainly open to that. We'd like to go ahead and start our city council meeting as of April second, twenty twenty five. And I've asked council member chambers to offer the invocation for us, after which I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we give thanks to thee for the opportunity we have to be in this meeting tonight. We are grateful for this wonderful community in which we live and for the people that make it so good. We are grateful to have the opportunity to express our feelings on issues that face the community and pray that we may do so in a civilized and polite manner. That we will allow all to be heard and all to speak. And we pray as a council that we may be wise and judicious in our decisions and make decisions that are not only in accordance with thy will, but are in the best interests of our community. We express our love to thee for our Savior, for his atonement, for this marvelous time of year in which we celebrate his resurrection. Please bless us to go forward with thy blessings and thy spirit, we humbly pray, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. All right. On the agenda, we need to do the roll call of the council members at this point in time. Mariana, please. Okay, thank you very much. We have a full meeting. And before we before we adjourn, don't let me forget to we need to talk about the next council meeting. In fact, I guess we could just talk about it even right now. I know there's going to be it's spring break on the sixteenth, and I know there's going to be several people out of town. Council members, are you? I know there was a couple of you that said that you would probably be out of town. You you will not be here. Councilmember Reese will not be here.
I'm out of town, but I can zoom in.
Okay, so that's three at least. How about you'll you'll be here. You'll be here. You'll be here. Okay, all right. Well, maybe we'll take a look at that and see what's the best way to go. If we have to have a couple of zoomers to have a quorum, we might do that. But we'll we'll look at our staff. I know there's going to be a few key staff members out of town, too. So we'll take a look at what the agenda might need to look like. And if we need to move the meeting one week, we could possibly do that. Or if we can if we can arrange it so that we can get zoomed in. Oh, come to think of it, I probably won't be here either because I'm having surgery on the tenth. I don't know if I'll feel good enough by then. Maybe I maybe I will, but we'll see. So, okay, anyway, let's move on. And we might switch up our order a little bit here just to be able to get the things done that we want to, you know, be able to that we have people here for. So item number four is the Just Serve Proclamation presentation to the city. And we have Eric Andreessen and just you. You're what? You're yeah, your family. Okay, yeah. If you'd introduce everybody to us, please. And we're glad to have you here. Thanks for being here.
You bet. Thank you. So I'm Eric Flavia and Sandra. They're just other local representatives of JustServe.org. We appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. JustServe.org is a completely free website and app which exists solely to just help connect individuals and families and community members and groups with meaningful service opportunities in the area. And so in response and recognition of the city's recent official declaration and proclamation, commitment to service, we're here tonight to just present you with a plaque and an award as an officially registered Just Serve city and present you with some other items, some bags with some t-shirts and other fun things in them that you can distribute among yourself or or perhaps even occasionally, we'd encourage you to recognize certain community members as local Just Serve heroes and and you can present them with an award as well.
Why don't we have everybody, council members, everybody come down front here and we'll we'll have you present that to us. And we got I think Brett wants to do a photo op there. So.
I think so. Thank you so much.
Cheese. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, all right. Thank you very much. Appreciate your efforts. We get all this stuff. You guys want to grab that and just set it back there? Thank you. Thank you. Nice to meet you. Very much. Okay, well, thank you very much. We appreciate that. Now we have item number five is the oath of office for Officer Andrew Foster and one of our new officers here in town. Thank you for being here. We appreciate it. You brought your family with you?
I did.
Some people. Would you go ahead and just take a minute and tell us a little bit about yourself and maybe introduce your family if you'd like to and
Absolutely.
Come on up to the microphone if you wouldn't mind.
I'm Andrew Foster. I'm I took the position as a lateral detective here for the Rexburg Police Department. I'm coming from the Teton County Sheriff's Office in Driggs, Idaho.
Okay.
I served there for ten years, two years in patrol and eight years as a detective. I'm I'm just excited to be here. We relocated to Rexburg in twenty twenty three. And both my kids, youngest will be in school soon, but my oldest daughter is in Hibbert Elementary School, and we just we really love it here. So I'm excited to serve the community and be a part of this wonderful community. I'll start with my oldest daughter, Brooklyn Foster. My wife, Angela Foster, she's my high school sweetheart. We dated all through high school and and even middle school.
In the Driggs area?
Yeah.
Okay, middle school.
We dated in middle school.
She's going dating. Well, maybe we'll maybe we'll have to hear your story of that.
Yeah.
Okay.
My youngest boy Coleman Foster. And then next to him is my father, John Foster, and my mother, Holly Foster.
Great, thank you. All right. Well, thank you for being here. We appreciate that. And we have a our city attorney Spencer Ramel here to do the swearing in ceremony.
I Andrew D. Foster.
I Andrew D. Foster.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Idaho.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Idaho.
The ordinances of the city of Rexburg.
The ordinances of the city of Rexburg.
And the law enforcement code of ethics.
And the law enforcement code of ethics.
I will endeavor to enforce these laws.
I will endeavor to enforce these laws.
Best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
That I will faithfully discharge all of the duties assigned or requested of me.
And that I will faithfully discharge all of the duties assigned or requested of me
in my capacity as a law enforcement officer for the city of Rexburg.
In my capacity as a law enforcement officer to ensure the city of Rexburg.
All right, thank you. Okay, and thank you. We we would like to welcome you officially to what we call Team Rexburg and hope that you enjoy your time here in the in the Rexburg Police Department and working with all the city all of the city team. Appreciate you. Okay, we'll move to item number six, which is the time for public comment. And before before we go there, just since we're talking about the police department, we'd just like to thank all of you police officers that are here. Thank you for all the all the work you do to help keep our city safe and protected and all of the all of the things that you do for us. We appreciate all of you very much. And yes. And hopefully, we'll be able to get you in a new police building here sometime fairly soon. We're we're working on that. So that's that's one of our next priorities here. So. All right, item number six is a time for public comment. That is for items that are not on the agenda. If there's anyone who would like to make us aware of anything, we ask you to come to the podium and state your name and address and keep the comments to about. Keep the comments to about three minutes or so. That, that's helpful. Is there anyone that would like to, like to make any comments at this time? Hearing none. Is there anyone online? With their hand up?
No, there is not.
No, okay, thank you. All right, and we will move on to item number. Seven, which is, um. Mayor's business. I'll just kind of let, let you know, I, I referenced Team Rexburg and, uh, we've been going through. Uh, for the last. Uh, about two weeks, we've, we've had a consultant here. Who, uh, teaches and trains about leadership. And, uh, how all of us can be leaders in our own right, uh, even. Even those who, uh, you know, aren't necessarily designated as a crew leader or whatever, but even be a leader for yourself. In the work that we do here at the city. So we had all of the city employees. Um, all of our team members have been coming in on two day, uh, shifts. And we did three two-day shifts in the last couple of weeks with all of them. They kind of took turns, you know, so that everything would be covered, but they. Took turns coming in and doing this, this training. And then today we started the, uh, training with all of the supervisors, the department heads and the foreman. Basically the supervisor training. And so, uh, today the, today the topic was kind of what the trainer has learned from. From our other team members about what they think, you know, uh, we need to improve on, what we're doing. What we're doing well and what we need to improve on. And, uh, so that the supervisors and, uh, department heads and, 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 uh, me and we probably. Probably ought to have you guys come tomorrow if you want, if you've got time available, you're welcome. Uh, we'll, we'll be going again tomorrow from eight thirty AM until about three thirty or four. And you're all welcome to come to that. Um, but it's, it's been really interesting to, uh, these challenges to look at ourselves and see what we can. Do better and how we can, uh, take care of each other better and, and make, make it so we've got a really good work culture and a good work environment so that people. Want to be here and are happy here and, and that kind of thing. So, so we've been, we've been working hard on that, trying to, uh, maintain a good work culture here at the city. Let's see, other than that, I don't have anything in particular really, uh, to report other than, uh, you know, I sit on the E cap board and things are going. Pretty well there. Uh, the, uh, the, uh. Federal budget cutbacks are a concern because it's a heavily. Uh, that, that, uh, E cap is heavily subsidized by government grants and things and they. Uh, of course, the goal and in that they don't have a lot of revenue sources other than grants and donations. Cause the, uh, the purpose of that is to help, help people. Uh, get out of the throes of poverty and become self-sufficient. That's, that's kind of the goal of that organization. And, uh, so it's, it's heavily subsidized. So they are a little concerned about that. Uh, trying to make sure that everything's gonna be able to. Steep, uh, keep operating. So, uh, we'll keep you more apprised of that as we go along. And we did have yesterday a, uh. Kind of a grand opening or a ribbon cutting for the Rexburg Soup Kitchen. I don't know if many of you have heard about that, but, uh, there's a. A couple here in town that is heading up a group that is organ, that is organizing a soup kitchen to have. Uh, a hot meal prepared for folks that are hungry. Uh, they will be doing that over at the Veterans Building there on, on the county fairgrounds. And, uh. They are expecting, from what I understand, a pretty big crowd for their first, uh, first time and I, and I can't remember if they said they're gonna be doing that. Once a month or once a week. I think it's one. Does anybody know? Is it every Wednesday? So once a week? Okay. Yeah, I, I didn't ever hear that for sure on the, on the schedule, so I wasn't sure about that, but. Oh, one thing that too that I forgot to mention, uh, when we had the Just Serve people here talking is one of the, the things they're. One of the first things they're doing that I think is really awesome. I don't know, it's not necessarily the first thing they're doing, but something that's, uh, just upcoming is. The major cleanup. It's called, uh, Clean Global Cleanup Day and, uh. They're encouraging everyone that's willing to come out on Saturday, the first Saturday in May. Is that May second or May third? Third, right? Yeah, May third. And, uh, they're, they're organizing three different pickup locations around town where you can go pick up trash bags. Kind of sign up and get the vests that you see people wearing. And, uh, that'll be at, uh, I believe it's at. Eight AM, um, for the, for the, uh, start of it and, um. So I encourage you to, uh, participate in that if you can. Encourage all your family and friends and neighbors to, and to participate in that. It's really a great thing because. I don't know if you've noticed as you're driving up and down Highway twenty, it's, it looks pretty trashy right now. Because of all the things that get thrown out the windows and stuff, but. But after that has been done and all of our good community service citizens get out there and, and do that. It looks so much better. It's, it's amazing how much better it looks and it, it makes us proud to be able to, to be, to be living here, so. So I would encourage, we're, we're putting that on our, uh, social media to encourage people to come out and then we're. We're even, we're talking with the Just Serve people about maybe doing a, uh. Just to some kind of an appreciation thing at, at Porter Park after we're done, you know, shortly after ten AM. Uh, just inviting people to gather there if they'd like to and maybe just having a real simple treat like cookies and milk or something like that. So that, uh, people will know that we appreciate their efforts to help us. Uh, that's one of the things we, we really can't just rely on government to do because. Honestly, we just don't have enough people and budget to be out there. The city doesn't, the county doesn't, and the Idaho Transportation Department doesn't. Have enough people and, and money to be able to get out and clean up all of the trash, so we rely on, on our. We rely on us to help ourselves, right? So we appreciate everybody that comes out and helps, helps with that. Okay, um. Let's move on to the, uh, the staff reports and we have a lot of folks here that are interested in, um. In the, uh, resolutions for the, uh, LID for the curb and gutters and things like that. And then also on item number nine, we have, um. The LID thing. So since we've got a lot of folks here that are interested in that, let's, let's, um, move to that and, um. And we'll come back to an aid A later. Uh, so Keith, why don't you go ahead and if you would come up and, and we'll, uh. Give us the presentation that you, oh, is he gone? Where'd he go?
He had to step out for just a second.
Oh, he did?
Yeah, he'll be back.
Okay, all right. Well, then let's, um. Let's see, and pretty much everything we've got behind that actually. Actually, uh, has to do with him, so. This alleyway thing, he's, that, he's gonna have to talk to us about that too. So, uh, I think that would be more Keith Allen, we're, we're, oh, he went out to find him. Let's see if he's available to come back in here. See, is he on the phone out there? Do you know? Okay, all right. Well, yeah, let's, uh, let's go ahead and have Matt come up and, uh, we'll just go ahead and move through then. Uh, while we're waiting for him to, to be able to come back in and, okay, Matt, let's go ahead. With the finance item.
And then just, just a quick update. I know you guys have a lot of interest in the. Process that we're going through with the police station. So we, we have signed the contract.
Is your, is your mic on?
Maybe I pushed it off.
Yeah, there we go. Yeah.
Don't touch that thing. It turns off. Uh, so anyways, the, uh, as you know, we, we came to you, I think it was last meeting and, and so we signed the contract for the architect and the CMGC. And then our kickoff meeting will actually be on April eighth. And it's going to be here at City Hall. So if anybody wants to come, they can. It's from nine o'clock to four o'clock. And so. Anyways, so just want you to know that if you're available. Okay, so.
Catch that?
Yeah, yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so they, well, they reached out to us and so a couple of things that we'll do. So we already kind of have a, a starting point, if you will, on the square footage and the different spaces that we think we need. And so they'll kind of take us through a process where we'll. More, we'll define that better, right? And, and kind of narrow down the total square footage. And so we'll go through that process. We're gonna talk about, uh, future growth. Uh, you know, what is the need gonna be for officers in the different divisions, those kind of things? I don't know if we'll get into it in that meeting, but I would imagine so. We, we do need to narrow down. To do two different sites. And so the part of the scope of their work is to look at two different sites. So I'm sure we'll talk about sites and, and kind of go through that process of what it would look like to decide. A potential site. And then there's a lot of other things that. I'm not even a hundred percent aware of because they're gonna take us through that process. But those are kind of some of the big things. And then we'll talk about, I'm sure we'll talk about dates and milestones and. Trying to stay on task, right? So that we can meet those deadlines, so. Nine o'clock.
Did you say till four?
Till four, yeah, yeah. Originally it was a day and a half. But then when we scaled back the scope with the architect, uh, we went back to nine to four, so just a day meeting. So, okay. Um, okay, so this item, um. So I present this to you guys every two years basically. And, uh, what it is by statute in Idaho. To change compensation for elected officials, you have to have a public hearing. Um, and then what you're actually voting on, if you do change it, doesn't, does not take effect. Until the following January. And so there's, there's some, some guidelines that you have to do it so much time in advance as well. And so what we have done at the city of Rexburg is. Many, many years ago, we kind of established, um. Those wages, if you will, for mayor, city council, and then it's a little different for the council president. And, uh, what we've done since is we, we have really just looked back at the Consumer Price Index, the CPI. And then just changed it based on that change over those two years. And so if you look up here, you can see from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-five. That's about a five point eight three, eight three percent if we use that Consumer Price Index. And that's the same CPI that we use, uh, when we look at the COLA for the employees. Anyway, so that's kind of the method we went through. So as you look down here, um, you can see the current column here. And then you can see the proposed with that five point eight three increased. And then, uh. Oops, sorry, you can see the increase. I don't know what that is.
It's coming from my TV.
Somebody's phone is.
So an increase, you can see the increase and then you can see the proposed and then I broke, I broke it out. Through the twenty-six periods because then we, we, we pay every two weeks, right? So twenty-six times per year. And then here's the code down here if you want to reference that. I did do just a little bit of research. I pulled up, uh, Idaho Falls and Pocatello are kind of our closest neighbors. And that you can see here kind of where they, they sit. Um, so you can see the council members are actually quite a bit higher in those cities. And, and at first we kind of looked, like the mayor and I actually looked up Pocatello and we thought, well, maybe they meet more often. But they actually just meet the same as you guys do twice a month, so officially anyways. I know you meet more than twice, but in city council meetings. So, um. This is, whoops, is the resolution up, Deb? Or do I just need to hit it? Oh, that's what I mean. Where's the public hearing one? But. Sorry. So I was just gonna show you that. So, so really what we're looking for is if there's any discussion on that, if, if you guys feel good about. Having a public hearing with those numbers. Then you would need to set that date. And then I would need to publish it in the paper, uh, so that there's notice. Well, maybe we didn't get it. Did you get, did I get this one? Okay, so I'll just give you the details. So what, what we'd have to do is we'd have to publish it in the newspaper on April fifteenth and April twenty-second. And then the idea would be that you have a public hearing on May seventh. And so, so basically I'm looking to see if, if you guys want to. Do that or not.
I think it's right there in the right-hand corner of the previous slide you had up.
Oh, the published date, yeah. Yep. Sorry, I, I actually wrote up the public notice. I must not have slipped it in the folder, so.
Okay, well, so basically what the action we need to take tonight is then just to set a public hearing.
Yeah.
On May seventh, right?
I mean, yeah. If, if that's what you want to do.
Okay. If, is there any discussion or questions from council members? If there are none, I would, oh, yes.
I know, this is very awkward because it's our salaries. So I was just curious, like, is that normal that, like, so the mayor's is about as high as the. You know, their populations are a little higher than ours. Is that what we've, have we just always been like that? Has it always been?
I think pretty much I've just kind of watched that over the years and it, it tracks pretty close, you know, where. I mean, I, the bigger cities, but I do a lot of the same stuff, you know, I have to do a lot of the same things that they do. Um, you know, they've got. Some of them have additional responsibilities like an airport. But they have an airport manager that runs the airport too, so it's not like the mayor of Idaho Falls does a lot with the airport. Uh, so it, it runs pretty similar, yeah.
Some of them have also set up like, uh, an automatic increase like each year, like two percent until they do the.
Yeah, that's, that's what they have set in that it does a two percent every year increase, but we've never done that. We've always just.
Yeah.
Put it off until two year.
Yeah, we've never done it that way. We've just always, uh, done the public hearing and went through the process every two years, so.
Any other questions? Comments? Uh, if there are none, I would entertain a motion to set the public hearing date for May the seventh, twenty twenty-five.
Mr. Mayor, I agree that we set a public hearing date for May tenth.
May, May seventh.
Oh, sorry, May, May seventh for the proposed mayor and city council salary raise recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
By Councilmember Eric Erickson. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, we will go ahead and set that public hearing date for May seventh. All right, now we are, it looks like Keith is back in the room, okay? We've got folks here that are interested in what we. Have to talk about on the LIDs that we talked about two weeks ago. So let's go ahead and. Tell us what you've learned since then and what we, what we want to discuss.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Um. So just first off, after our work meeting discussion, I went back and we looked at. Um, if we took on, uh, the curb and gutter a hundred percent, what that does to push back our. How often we can do the streets. Um, and so that way you guys are aware of, of kind of what those constraints are with that, so if you scroll down. Okay, I was like, wow, I've cut all of it off. Um, so anyway, so if we did a hundred percent curb and gutter. It basically pushes us out about eleven years. Um, if we do a hundred percent curb and gutter and thirty percent sidewalk. It pushes us out, um, about thirteen years on that. Um, so that kind of lets you know when we, when we look at that. Um, that's kind of now our new horizon if we're gonna take that on. And make that adjustment, so. Um, so we have that one and then I just kind of wanted to show that way, I think this map that they have kind of. Shows a little bit kind of with our growth. Um, and so. Almost looks purple in there, so that's the one. We zoom out a little bit. So this map basically shows the areas in blue are areas that we've reconstructed. Over the past thirty years, um, the areas in. Pink, um, are areas that we've seen new growth, new development. So that's. Development coming in and then dedicating those streets over to the city. On that. And so you can see within the past thirty years kind of what we've been able to do and then what our growth has been. Um, with that. So just to give you kind of an, a visual.
Can you tell us if the, of the new, um, construction in the last thirty years? Have we had to go back to any of those and redo them?
Um, let me, well, we've done. That. I want to say. It might have been one, maybe Rolling Hills is the only one I can think of that might have been. Where we had to come back in, but I'd say for the most part, we haven't been back in, but they're, they're not all thirty years old. So. It's, it's in the past thirty years. So some of those are a lot newer than other ones. I do have some. Uh, one. So if you bring up this other map. This will give you a little bit better look at timelines of when streets were, uh, reconstructed. And how old. So scroll down to the, so, so if you look at green is basically in the last ten years. I, I know this, it gets a little blurry, I guess, at that small. Maybe we can zoom back in just a little bit. Yellow. Was basically from two thousand six to two thousand fifteen. Red is nineteen ninety-six to two thousand five, and then white is kind of pre nineteen ninety-five. So that kind of gives you an idea of. Has, how things have been constructed.
Although white streets are, are streets that have not had anything done to them. Is that what we're?
Yes.
Not had anything done to them since for a long, long time.
I mean, I wouldn't say anything done because obviously we're crack ceiling, stuff like that. We haven't come in and reconstructed this.
Yeah, reconstructed, right? Yeah, okay. So that tells us that there's a, still a lot of work to do.
Yeah. And so, I mean, with, with that, I mean, obviously the.
Keith, I noticed this one just popped out right. I know K Street we've done and it does, it's white. Right now. They just drove down that today. And I looked at that.
Yeah, you're right. So this might have, there might be, because we quickly. So there might be some areas. So, yeah, there, there might be a, some minor ones in there that we. Catch when we were going through. K Street is, is the one right next to Sunset Circle?
Yeah.
No, we came through and, and I'm trying to remember when, but it, it was a little while ago. I think that that one was reconstructed, but. But yeah, there might be a couple when we were throwing this together pretty quick.
Yeah, he was, he was. Furiously working on that today to get it done. So there, there may be a couple that he missed in there.
But overall, it's just kind of to give an idea of kind of where we're sitting. That way council has an understanding of, of that. Yeah, go ahead.
So, um, so we don't have to redo the curb and gutter though with every street, right?
No, no. So it, it just depends on the, on the curb again. There, there's places. That curb and gutter is bad, that obviously if there's ponding. Um, or if there's a bunch of cracks, because the, the main thing with the curb and gutter that we're trying to do is to contain. The water and get it off the streets and then get it away and then infiltrate it into the ground. Anytime we have ponding water on our roadways. They'll deteriorate even faster. But you're, you're correct. And we're not always replacing a hundred percent of the curb and gutter.
Yeah. So can you just walk us through how you came to that eleven year pushout?
Yeah. So that's just taking what the current cost would be, what our current estimated costs are. On the LID. And I wouldn't say that this curb and gutter. Is much different because we're not gutting whole streets. If we're gutting whole streets, that curb and gutter cost is going to be a lot higher. So. I'd say the curb and gutter is probably a, a balance on that, but that's kind of what we've estimated it off of. On that is this year's LID because those are the numbers I have and I just subtract what that cost we would be picking up. Off of our budget. So that two point five, two million, when we look at that and I subtract off that cost off of that. Is where I get kind of that, that portion.
The two point five, two million is what we have, but if we, if we pick up a hundred percent of the curb and gutter, then. Then that drops to two point oh seven million, right? And that's what pushes. So it pushes the new streets out.
But I'm still a little confused because when I look at the whole streets budget. And, you know, sometimes it's the thirteen million like we've already talked about, but a lot of that earmarked money is for LIDs. So like the last year's budget, a lot of that earmarked money was for LIDs. That's not this two million. It was like, you know, part of the seven million that was earmarked. So I'm, I'm confused how we're only talking about the two million.
So when we do LIDs, we transfer from Fund forty-three, which is the street reconstruction fund. And so the source of money ultimately really comes from Fund O two, because what happens is we do. Maintenance in Fund O two, and then at the end of the year, we zero out that fund and whatever's remaining. Which we're saying that the average was at about two point five, two. We transfer to Fund forty-three. And then as we do construction projects and LIDs. There's generally at least two, if not three of those going on at any given time, just because you're closing one out, you're starting a new one, you're planning a new one. And the transfer comes from, from Fund forty-three. So, so really the source truly is your sales tax, um, not sales. Fuel tax and franchise fees and whatever's remaining that we transfer into that Fund forty-three.
I think what she's asking though is it seems like, you know, when we look at those numbers, there's six or seven million dollars in there. And so I think. Isn't this what you're saying is why do we only have two and a half million to spend when we've got six or seven? But I think you're answering that, but. Did that make sense what he said that, it, it, it gets a little jumbled when we talk about all the different funds.
Well, and you have, I mean, you got to remember you have projects that are impact. Funds. So those are for specific projects. You have huge years where you'll have millions of dollars of projects that come from urban renewal. And you, you can't use this for LIDs on the urban renewal. The urban renewal is, uh, has to be used in that specific geographic area, right? That, that district, if you will. And so, so I, that's where it gets really tricky is yeah, we'll say, hey, this budget's ten million, but you got to remember. The source, right? And where that money's coming from. And what we're saying is you have about two and a half million, but if you want to go to the new method of. Hundred percent curb and gutter and thirty percent sidewalk. We anticipate that going down to about two million per year that you would have eligible for specifically reconstruction of roads through the LID process. All right.
And one of the things I think, you know, I mentioned it to a few of you, but I. I wasn't aware of this because a lot of people were saying, well, you know, the, in other cities, you know, they, they pay for everything, but. One of our employees just showed me this that he got today. He lives in Idaho Falls and, uh. And it's actually a, uh, it's called their curb and gutter replacement program. So he, they send him a list of contractors and, uh. Apparently the way they, they work at, there's, they have some city crews that come out and tear out the old curb, curb and gutter. But then the homeowner has to hire one of these contractors. To, uh, put in the new curb and gutter. They have to pay them upfront and then they apply to the city. For a refund of twenty dollars a linear foot. Uh, on their curb and gutter. And Patrick said his curb and gutter is, uh, going to be about sixty-six dollars a linear foot. So. So the city pays about not quite a third of the curb and gutter. So. So actually I, I guess. You know, that's not as unusual as we, as we think it is. So just, just throwing that out there for information. And there, you know, and as we have mentioned, as we looked at before, you know, their, their tax levy that, you know, just the normal taxes they pay every year. Quite a bit higher than ours. So it, it sounds like every city is, uh, strapped for funds to keep up with their streets. And as, you know, you drive around in cities, I know my, where my daughter lives down in Salt Lake, the, the residential streets down there are. In pretty bad shape too. And so I think every city struggles with the same thing we're struggling with is how to keep the streets in decent condition. Because we know that that's one of the biggest complaints we get is street potholes and all that kind of things. And then snow plowing. And of course, you know, this all comes out of the same budget. You know, the street maintenance and repairs budget at all, the snow plowing and everything comes out of that budget too. So. So that's, you know, I think. Keith's point is here's, you know, we need to. Know that when we're making these decisions on, you know, what we're going to cover and what we're going to ask residents to participate in. On, you know, what the effects are going to be on. Street repairs and maintenance and reconstruction things moving forward into the future. So. Right? Is there anything else you need to?
That covers it. And then. I don't know if everybody's kind of seen the, the resolution. So on the resolution, obviously the dates are modified, but as we go down through. So we have, we have kind of two things in the resolution. One is, is when we do an LID. And then the, the top one is if someone came in and said, hey, we want to replace our curb and gutter, our sidewalk. Or whatnot on that. And so. So that's kind of where we had it, an actual price, because we don't know what, because generally when we're bidding it out, we're going to. Have it bid out by several contractors. So knowing what, what that cost is, so we've just adjusted those prices up from what they were. You can see the. The difference in what it used to be. Um, and then we also has that, or especially on the curb and gutter approved by the, the city engineers. And the reason why we, we look at that is because sometimes we get people coming in that want to do a driveway approach. And so when they come in, if the curb and gutter is, is in good shape and they just want to do a driver approach, we wouldn't participate in that. But if the curb and gutter is in, in bad shape, then that would be a typical thing that we would participate if they were just replacing that curb and gutter. And so that's why we kind of have that caveat in there for us to take a look at it and make sure. It's not a situation where it's perfectly good curb and gutter and they just want a driveway approach on it. And then if you go down there, then, um. What we, what we looked at. So, and this is obviously. A discussion for city council to have on this. And if there's any, any modifications from what's currently on here. You just let us know. And obviously this takes a vote. From city council to make that the final determination of how this looks. And then, um, and then we go from there with that policy. So is there any discussion from?
So, so run us through, it looks to me like what you're, what you're proposing here is that. The city not participate in sidewalk. Was that reconstructed sidewalk, new sidewalk, both?
Oh, yeah. Thanks for the clarification. So it's only, we're only looking at replacement. So not, if it's not there, then the property owner will be responsible for the initial install.
Yeah, what I, I don't understand what you mean by no participation if it, unless it meets the engineering standard.
Oh.
Because that's new.
Yeah. What we were thinking there is, you know, if, if someone's got a, a sidewalk and it's in good shape. Doesn't necessarily need to be replaced, but you know, if, you know how sometimes we're going through these and. And it has to be replaced because it's just, it's three percent grade instead of two percent. It's really a good sidewalk. But it doesn't meet that ADA standard. So we have several times when we've had to have those. Then if that's the case, you know, they probably wouldn't be replacing the sidewalk because it's in good shape. But, you know, if, if we have to do it just to meet that ADA standard, then we would go ahead and participate in. In the replacement of that.
And you're saying no, no help, that, that, but that's different than what we talked about last.
So there was some discussion back and forth. So that's, that's an, an option for the city council to discuss at this, at this point.
So, so I thought in, in our meeting last week, we said we wanted to keep the thirty percent participation.
One of the suggestions.
Yeah. But then there was other talk about not having the thirty percent. So that's where we're going to need council clarification.
People, I heard like three or four say that that was what they were hoping for. So I just don't understand why that wasn't the default.
Well. Well, it's up to you. I mean, it, you know, if, if you want to. Pay for everything, you can pay for everything, but, uh, you know, it's, it, it's just going to make it so that our sidewalk, I mean, our. Streets fall apart faster and we can't get to them. I mean, we're all talking budget here, you know, it's. Like going to the candy store with your kids, you know, you're going to.
My understanding, my understanding was that we talked about curb and gutter a hundred percent. But, uh, or thirty percent, we, we would take on the curb and gutter, but the homeowner would. Take care of the sidewalk at a hundred percent. That's what, that was my understanding.
Yeah, I, I remember council member, council president Walker saying even, right? You said.
Well, that's what I thought.
Yeah, he did. But there were several others that said, I'd, I'd rather see it be a hundred percent and a hundred percent. Council member Erickson.
So Mr. Mayor, I, as a, we did the last meeting, I did talk about doing a hundred percent of the curb and gutter. I'm very nervous as we keep pushing this out sixty, seventy, eighty years, we, what are the streets going to look like? Dirt, dirt roads? I totally understand where it's such a burden on the homeowners. But it does seem like to, to me, it's a good break by doing the curb and gutter. That seems like that is part of the street. As we done example to that homeowner that was here at the last meeting, it saved him what nine thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Close to, that's a huge savings. Uh, to some. But. I'm wary of doing everything of going into it. I mean. And when I built and stuff like that, I definitely had to put the sidewalk in.
Yeah. Well, and the other thing that you got to consider too is. You know, I, I think it's better to move in a little bit smaller increments because what about the people in last year's LID that paid? You know. They, they paid a lot more and the year before that and that. And so I think if we're going to change things, we at least need to change them in. Fairly small increments. And then I think last week's discussion was really good, actually. In fact, it has spurred a lot of discussion on. Different ways that we can go about, uh, trying to generate more street money. I think if we want to put together a. A permanent override levy to put to the voters. You know, maybe next year in, in May or something, we could certainly put that together and see if people want to support that. That would be helpful because that would give us more money in streets. I even, I got an email from a lady that talked about the way, um, they do. They do things in, in Minnesota and North Dakota and some cities there where they. When, when a person moves into town, they, they have these little, what they call special assessments or something, and people just. Start paying that right from when they move into town and they pay up and they build up a little bit of an account. And so that when something needs to be fixed in front of their home, like the curb and gutter sidewalk. They actually take the money from, it's kind of like a little savings account. Now, whether that's legal in Idaho, we, we've had discussions on whether that's legal because that could be construed as a, as a tax. And we can't really levy taxes without the, without permission of the, uh, the state legislature. So we'd have to look into that. From a legal perspective, but you know, that's another option because that would kind of spread it out and so that we wouldn't have to have these. Big bills that come to people. But I, I guess my feeling is, is if we, if we go with a hundred percent and a hundred percent.
What was a hundred percent, a hundred percent? You mean a hundred percent and thirty?
No, hundred percent. We take a hundred percent of the curb and gutter. The homeowner takes a hundred percent of the sidewalk. And then we, you know, we put it on a ten-year contract that spreads it out. We lower the interest rate. That gives us a lower interest rate. I, I feel like we're doing. Quite a bit to help mitigate the high costs of construction that have just kind of run away on us.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I also do like, you know, coming up the committee or looking at the levy, I mean. Put out the voters, let them decide if they want to do a, a street levy for, to me. We don't even make that decision for them. Let them put on a ballot and let them make that vote. To see if that equals out, but. That's just some LIDs.
Yeah, yeah. And I think, I think we're. Happy to try that. I mean, you know, you never know. I mean, the, the last one was quite a few years ago. It, it failed, but. Things have changed. People's attitudes may have changed enough that they're, you know, we had a lot of folks here last week that said, hey, we'd be willing to. Pay a certain amount on a levy if it, if it would spread that cost out over more people. And so we don't have to have these big. LID bills, which I think would be great if people are willing to do that. And, and you might could figure out a way to. You know, it takes some math work, but you know, we can figure this out if, if we, if we levied. A certain amount, but if you've, if you've been paying on an LID for so many years, that maybe you get credit. On your first few years, if you've already paid off an LID, something like that, you know, just a way to try to figure out to make it. So that it's a little more equitable for people. Maybe a way to do something like that, but.
I do know there's some discussion at the, and the meeting last week about doing a citywide LID. They do it in Utah sometimes and I, I brought that up. And I sound out like that was illegal in Idaho to do.
Legal or illegal?
Illegal.
Oh, illegal.
To do. I just want to bring that back up to tension to the people that brought it up at the last meeting. To do. I just want to bring that back up to attention to the people that brought it up at the last meeting that to do a full site, full citywide L I D. And am I correct on that?
We probably would have to have Spencer look into that. Probably a little bit more, but I mean, on the face value, generally on an L I D, you gotta have a derived benefit uh, to the property owner. And so generally that's based on the linear foot or area, and we just look at that in front of their, their property, right? And so that's where that derived benefit comes from. I'm not sure of a way, but I mean, obviously we could have Spencer look into that and.
Mr. Mayor, to that point though, we talked earlier, especially given that work session about organizing the task force and including a couple of citizens are interested. And let them look at alternatives to the L I D approach, including the citywide. If it's not legal, it's not, but they can look into that. And so regardless of what we do tonight, I think organizing a task force and maybe tasking Keith to organize this group that are interested and let them start looking at what, what other cities do. Not just in Idaho, but across the nation. Then we can look at what's legal, what's not, what works for us, what won't work for us.
And if it's illegal, maybe there's things we can take up with state legislature.
Right, right. We, we can just better know if there are options out there that we're not, we're not looking at, then we ought to know what they are. So regardless of what we do on this, I think that task force needs to be implemented. And I've got some names here. I'll just pass them off to you or Deborah and maybe we can get that started.
I agree. I'd love to see the task force go forward because again, whatever we do here, we're, I don't know, I don't, I don't like the idea of changing the rules for every L I D that comes down. So we've got to find a permanent, at least relatively permanent, long-term solution to where we're going.
Yeah, I agree.
And so if we can get some buy-in from some other people and get some research on that, I would love to see their ideas.
Yes.
Yeah, I guess I feel like that was incremental to keep the thirty percent that we already had because we changed that several years ago. And then add on the curb and gutter. To me, that felt incremental because now we're taking away something that we had before and then adding something. So, I mean, it's not quite as spectacular.
Percentages wise it are, but dollars wise, you're not, you're, you're actually giving, we're actually moving quite a bit to the city side dollars wise.
You are if you're doing the curb and gutter. You are if you're doing the curb and gutter, but yeah, I, I guess I just, I feel like last week the room was pretty full of residents. And I feel like I spoke to some of them after and they felt like the consensus, I know we hadn't voted yet. But they felt like we were adding the curb and gutter a hundred percent and keeping the thirty percent. And now I feel like we're changing that. And so I just, I, I feel bad about that. So I feel like it feels a little dishonest to some residents, I would imagine.
And I disagree. I disagree. I don't think that was any consensus. I was not in consensus with that at the time. My, my feel, feel when I, when we walked out of here was we were talking about a hundred percent of the curb and gutter, which is a significant cost. And, and then, and then the, the homeowner taking a hundred percent of the sidewalk. That was my, just like they would if it was a new, if it was new sidewalk that anybody pays for when they build a new home. That's, that was, that was my.
Quite a length.
Okay, well, this, this is the last time I'm gonna say, but, but I thought no one else heard that we said, you asked for our direction and we said thirty percent and you said okay, and then the meeting ended. Is that not what, what you heard?
We all heard it.
That, that is what I heard. Our direction was, and you said, okay. So I first left the meeting thinking that that.
No, I, I'm, I'm not arguing you with, with you that that's, that that was one of the things that was brought up, but right at the end, we talked about, we said, we said, but if we take on the hundred percent of the curb and gutter, that's a pretty significant increase in what the city is going to pay for. I said, I feel like, you know, the homeowners has, needs to have, you know, a, a stake in the, in the game here. And I said, I think if we do, if we take on the curb and gutter, that's a pretty significant increase. And remember, I looked at the one bill and I said that off of eleven thousand dollars, that takes off almost nine, you know, eighty-five hundred to nine thousand dollars off of that bill. And so the rest of it would be what, twenty-five hundred to three thousand spread over ten years. And I said, I think that feels like we're doing a lot besides, you know, doing that and lowering the interest rate and being able to put it over, so like Idaho Falls, they don't, they don't even put it over ten years. They make the homeowner pay it upfront. And so I, I felt like that was a, you know, with us taking over a hundred percent of the curb and gutter, that was a good concession without making it too big of a change because there again, and I keep bringing this up, but it kind of keeps getting ignored that people last year paid, you know, people last year paid seventy percent of the curb and gutter and they paid seventy percent of the sidewalk. And, and that was a big bill. This year's are also big bills, but we are willing to take over a big chunk of it because the curb and gutter is the bigger chunk of it than the sidewalk. So yeah, we're taking away the thirty percent of the sidewalk, but we're taking over seventy percent of the curb and gutter. So we're actually taking over a lot more than what we're, you know, what we're putting back. So I, I feel like in order to preserve, you know, our, our funds and be able to get more street work done that needs to be done, I think we need to be a little careful on what we're, you know, what we're just throwing out there for money because I, I think, you know, based on what, you know, some of these other cities do and, and that kind of thing, I think that's fair to have, you know, the homeowners pay a certain percentage or, or pay for the sidewalk at least. And, and if we take over the curb and gutter, then we're, we're taking over a, a big chunk. And I, and I know we talked about that right at the end of the meeting too. And so we felt like that would be something that, that would be fair to propose.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Last week I did say I was in favor of the thirty percent, or hundred percent on the curb and gutter and thirty percent on, on the sidewalk. But after looking at the numbers, I've changed. I think, and we just need to curb together and then have the homeowner do the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Five hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money that we can put into more street.
Also though, if I'm looking at the numbers right, from the previous thing that you, that you showed Keith, you know, that shows the, the reconstruction plan and how it pushes it out. It shows you that the annual budget required with a hundred percent curb and gutter, which would be the homeowner takes care of a hundred percent of the sidewalk if it needs to be replaced or needs to be installed new. Uh, that gives us a budget of two point zero seven million. And then the next line down, a hundred percent of curb and gutter and the city kicks in thirty percent of the sidewalk if it needs to be replaced. Homeowner, I assume then is a hundred percent new. They take care of a hundred percent of the new. That kicks the budget down to two point oh one million. So not being a math whiz, that's sixty thousand dollars.
Six hundred thousand, six hundred thousand.
Two point oh seven million to two point oh one million. Isn't that sixty thousand dollars difference? If it was two point seven million to two point one, that's six hundred thousand. But it's two point oh seven to two point oh one. That's sixty thousand. And if it's only sixty thousand, I, a, a, and again, we are on top of, we gotta change this in the future and we gotta move forward with, with a new funding schedule, figure something else out, whatever. I don't, at least for the short term, I don't see a huge problem with the sixty thousand. With going thirty percent on the sidewalks if they need to be replaced. But again, we would need to check on that number. Cause I mean, it, cause it kind of sounds like that seems to be the sticking point right now. Is, do we help with thirty percent of the sidewalks like we always have and do all the curb and gutter? To me, those two different, those two different plans comes to sixty thousand dollars a year, which doesn't, I mean, sixty thousand dollars is sixty thousand dollars, but in the grand scheme of things, that's three percent of the yearly budget. Just for roads alone.
Well, and the reality is that fifty years, it's a colossal failure. At sixty, it's a greater colossal failure, but we're still in failure mode.
Yeah.
So regardless of what we do, some alternative to this has got to materialize. Whether it's a permanent override on the levy, something has to change. Cause we're, we're failing at fifty, we're failing at sixty.
So just so that we can move things along. So is there anyone else who's willing to keep it at the thirty percent with the sidewalk and a hundred percent? Besides, it sounds like council member Research would be open to it. I'd be open to it.
What about the people on last year and the people the year before that, that were given, were, were giving the folks this year a lot more money than we gave them?
I don't.
How is that fair?
When we build the new funding schedule and we figure out a way to look back ten years and how we're gonna help those people in that, that'll obviously be factored into that.
And I don't think we can never change anything because of.
Well, no, we can't. I mean.
That's just my opinion.
Sure, we can change things. We can try to make things as fair as we can. And.
But I just wanted to know if there's another, if there's any other council members, because if there's not, then we might as well just vote on it and get it done with.
Well, I think, sorry, Mr. Mayor. I think we got it. I mean, this is something we just don't jump into. I mean, we're talking sixty thousand dollars is different than six hundred thousand. I mean, we was talking about six hundred thousand before. Is our math wrong up there? I don't want to just say, oh, this and come back and say, oh, it was six hundred thousand. Where are we gonna come with that?
Yeah, I definitely want to make sure that's.
I do fully agree with you that, that we need to look at this and come up with a better way. I like what we said about to come up with a committee to look in this, figure out this different. I mean, I had citizens hit me up, say, are you gonna reimburse us from last year, from the year before? And I've said, I'm going, we can't go on the past. We gotta look at the future. We can't look. And, but we also can't push out our streets to failure all the time and have dirt roads around our city. I mean, we, we got to sit there and do something things different. So are we looking to the math right on this? Are we? Is it six hundred thousand or sixty thousand?
So I pulled up, remember how we had the colors last time? So L I D fifty-four, the difference is sixty-two thousand dollars to go from the, just we do curb and gutter a hundred percent, they pay a hundred percent sidewalk. But if you add that thirty percent on this L I D, it was a sixty-two thousand dollar difference or sixty-two thousand additional dollars to the city.
Additional dollars on top of the, okay, so, and, and to take over the curb and gutter is how much?
It's like four hundred and fifty some thousand.
So four fifty plus sixty, that's where we're getting almost, almost six hundred thousand dollars difference that we're taking on.
The total cost.
Total, yeah.
So, and, and if I, if I remember correctly also, as we talked about in that meeting last time, this is a particularly large one.
Goodness.
Right, for this year. So if we do stick with the thirty percent on the sidewalks, again, just trying to make sure that we all understand the numbers the same before we vote, that sixty thousand additional that we would pay this time, if we have a smaller L I D next time, that hit to the city would be less significant than it is this time as well. So again, just so we're all, yeah.
And can I just say one more thing too? I do think it's important to remember that we're not saying we're never gonna do roads because the roads and the sidewalks do not have to always be linked together. We talked about that last week. So when we say that our roads are gonna be in complete ruin because we pick up more of this cost, I don't really feel like that's accurate because we don't have to redo the sidewalks every time we redo the road.
Just everything we do takes more money.
I know, I'm, I'm just saying, let, let's just, I think we shouldn't like catastrophize, but that's all I'm saying. And the average that the city or the, the, um, the resident portion of those was like, the average was like six hundred thousand. Right? Was that what it was?
I mean, what the?
Five year average.
Oh, the five year average for the total of the residents. Probably somewhere in there. I can't remember.
I think it was a little less than six hundred thousand. So just keeping the numbers in perspective here.
So Keith, anytime you reconstruct the street or work in the street right away, anything that hits that curb line behind it has to meet ADA requirements?
No. So the requirement from the federal government is the, the handicap accesses on the corners have to be upgraded anytime we can reconstruct the road. This city council has said, we don't want to let our sidewalks deteriorate, right? So when I say city council, I mean, pass to councils, right? So I'm not. Um, and so we've gone through and then went through and looked at those replacement criteria and then said, here's what needs to be replaced on that. So yeah, there is not a federal requirement. It's just the city council had opted not to let those sidewalks continue to deteriorate. Now, if we're gonna do the sidewalks, then we need to bring those up to ADA standard. So that's where those cross slopes come into play with that. So.
But, but Keith, if it's out two percent grade and it's still a good sidewalk, that's where I was talking last week about it. I think those are some things we need to look at maybe of changing to make a standard there that we don't have to really rip out a good sidewalk because it's two percent out of grade for, for that. But that's my opinion, but.
Okay, all right. Well, um, the, the proposal on the agenda, uh, yeah, on the agenda is to do the hundred percent curb and gutter, the city take hundred percent. And the homeowner, uh, be responsible for the sidewalks, a hundred percent of the sidewalks unless it's required to be taken out for ADA compliance only. And then, and then we would participate at thirty percent. So that's the proposal that we've, that we've got on here right now. So we can either, we can vote on that or you can, or we can change it if you, if you want to change it. So. You guys and what you want.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion, you know, you know, right or wrong. I will move that we, that we move forward with the, um, with the L I D reverse, rebur, reimbursement policies and procedures as, uh, let's see, ordinance number thirteen thirty as proposed, including the, the one hundred percent citizen participation on sidewalk and the city's one hundred percent participation on curb and gutter.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second to that motion? Resolution twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
Oh, three. Okay. Does anybody want to second that motion or do you want to let it die? For lack of a second. Seconded by council president Walker. Okay, there's a motion to second. Any further discussion or questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Council member Johnson.
Go ahead. Okay. I was just gonna say, I, I really appreciate the change for the curb and gutter, but it's just gonna have to be an L for me because I, I just feel I'm not happy with the way it went after last week. So it's gonna be an L for me.
Okay, council member Erickson calling.
So back to the finance, are we looking at sixty thousand or, or looking at six hundred thousand?
Six, sixty thousand and it was probably five hundred and.
To take on the curb and gutter. So we're taking on almost six hundred thousand by doing the curb and gutter.
I think it was four fifty-one plus the sixty-two. Is that what you calculated it up? Or saw on there?
Sorry, I closed it. I'm pulling right back up.
So somewhere in that.
Well.
That range.
I'll tell you.
We just take over a hundred percent of everything and it'd only be a hundred and eighty thousand. So why don't we just pay for everything? A lot of cheers from the audience for that.
Well, we also gotta look at the future in our streets. That's, that's why I don't like pushing it out.
I mean, I, you know. Okay, any other, any other comments or, or discussion on that motion? We do have a, a, a motion and a second. So the motion is to do it as described on the screen right there. Um, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I need you to raise your hand so that I know. One, one, two, three, four. Okay, any opposed? All opposed. Two opposed. All right, motion passes. We will go ahead with, with the, uh, motion as stated on the screen.
Now, Mr. Mayor, to, to try, I, we've had a discussion about a, a committee, a task force to move forward with alternatives. I would, if I've, unless I'm out of line, I would, I would propose that that certainly take place. And whatever we need to do to make that happen, so that next time this comes up, we've got this, the input from the citizens as to how they want to finance this.
Options.
Some options.
Good idea. And we've got names here, people that are willing to, to take that on. So we'll definitely move forward with that and look at a lot of different options. I think the discussion's been good because, you know, we've, we've, I mean, the last two years, we didn't have a lot of residential properties on. And so the L I D actually was pretty easy. If you remember last year, I don't think we even had anybody show up to talk about it. It was easy. But it was a lot of commercial properties and there were quite a few residential properties. But it was a lot of commercial properties and there were quite a few residential properties that actually wanted to be on the L I D because they wanted to do some improvements and they wanted to have the option to spread it out over ten years and and that worked out well for them. So so, you know, those are easy, but the ones like this year where we have a lot of residential properties and things, they're they're a lot more difficult. So.
But I fully feel like that's what we need to do. We gotta get the task force. We need to look into this because I don't like going through this every two to three years when we have this. We need to look at the citizens and try to help out what we can. But we want their opinion put and their their ideas to do that. And if we need to go for levy, we need to do whatever we need to do to help to make it better. We need to do that.
And also, you know, echo all that, definitely. Let's get that task force. But also, my understanding is that this merely creates the L I D.
No, this is just a resolution.
Oh, this change, okay.
This is just the resolution, the participation.
The participation one. And then we got to create the L I D and then we got to send out the bids and then we got to accept those bids. So there's there's still, of course, going to be many opportunities for us to look at the numbers and and see what the bids come back at. And that'll give us a much more accurate picture too. Uh, because right now we're just working with estimates.
Yeah.
So that that'll help us make a better decision, I think, as we can need to go forward on this specific one as well as then as we look forward to the future on where we're gonna go, hopefully with a better uh a better formula.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate those suggestions. We will move forward with that. Okay, let's move on to item number. Let's see, where are we here?
I saw you to the.
Item number nine A uh would basically be kind of moving forward with the creation of the low, the local improvement district fifty four designated as ordinance number thirteen thirty if the motion passes and considered first read. So uh basically, that's all of them. And if there's any other discussion, did I did I miss something? Oh, that's a tabled item. Okay. Yep. Thank you, Council President. I appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion. We untable. The tabled item, occupation of local improvement district fifty four.
All right, thank you. There's a motion to take item ordinance thirteen thirty off the table. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Councilmember Chambers. Any further discussion about that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Taken off the table? All right, that motion passes. All right, then, at this point, then, we need to go ahead with the um with the ordinance thirteen thirty, which is to create local improvement district fifty four. Uh, is there a, do I hear such a motion? Don't want to do it?
Might as well.
After all that discussion?
I I would move that we uh create local improvement district fifty four designated as ordinance number thirteen thirty.
All right, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember Colin Erickson. Okay, any further discussion or questions? Yes.
Yes, sir. It's just me again.
No, you're good.
I I just, um, I'm not comfortable with the bills on this one. I I don't think we've done anything to address and I know no one agrees with me. That is fine. I'm still gonna say it. What?
We haven't done anything to adjust?
No, I didn't say that. I said, I'm still not comfortable.
Oh, okay.
I was going to say that I don't feel like we have done anything to help with the people who have lived here for decades that didn't have sidewalk. They didn't know when they moved in there that they would ever have to put in a sidewalk. And now their bills are tremendous because of putting in that sidewalk. And so it's just gonna be a no for me.
Okay. Any further discussions or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, that noted, uh, motion passes. So we will create L I D fifty four. We'll move forward with getting the bids collected and see where they come in and and uh just as a note, um, I was talking to Keith beforehand and we have a few folks that we've actually gone out and kind of looked at their properties a little bit and we're also willing to to do that some more. Go out and uh check out properties if they have questions about, you know, does this need to be replaced or does it not? All those kind of things. And we're certainly willing to do that more as we move forward with this with this L I D. Yes.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for doing that. That's one I think I was gonna suggest is maybe we go out and talk to some of these that looking at some of this, because I walked every one of them and just to see if we have to uh change out all those sidewalks. Also, um, this is to get the bids, get the information to come back to us and to say, yes, we'll do this or no, we won't do this. So this is just more information as we gain and to go forth on this to get going.
Right. Yeah, thank you for that. I appreciate that.
This is only for stretch.
Right.
Are you planning on changing your mind? Why are you saying it's only for stretch?
Okay, yeah, and just so that any of you here that uh if you're included in this, just in this L I D, if you've got questions about spots on your property, you've curbed, gutter, sidewalk, things like that, that you'd like to have us uh come out and take a look at and address, please uh call here in the City Hall and make an appointment with with someone. We'll have someone come out and and take a look at it for you to to make sure that we're doing everything right. Um, and uh, you know, we want to make sure that we try to get things done right the first time and not have to do anything over. So, okay, thank you very much. Uh, we will move forward with item number nine B, which is a second reading. That is the uh ordinance number thirteen twenty nine, which was to rezone two thirty eight and two forty three L A Lane from median medium density residential one to medium density residential two. Um, is there any questions? This is a second reading, so we've already discussed this and voted on it. Is there any questions or comments on it before we vote? If there are none, I would entertain a motion to consider ordinance number thirteen twenty nine second red.
Mayor, I'll make that. Mayor, I'll make that motion that to do the second reading of ordinance number thirteen twenty nine.
All right, thank you. Um, is there a is there a second to that motion? Second by Councilmember Reese. Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll consider ordinance thirteen twenty nine second red. We have no third readings. Item number ten A is a discussion regarding alleyways uh and more specifically between South First East and Cornell Avenue and uh Keith and Alan, I guess you're gonna kind of tag team this one to talk about these alleyways.
So we had a a property owner and a potential buyer retell to us on basically on Cornell and there's that alleyway that goes behind kind of in between First East and Cornell and there's Second South and Third South. We'll bring it up on the on the aerial photo so you can kind of see. There's a, there's numerous apartments that line up along First East. Um, and then you have a lot of homes along Cornell. Uh, but I believe probably several of those homes are um more like a dormitory C U P. Do we look that up?
I believe there's two or three that are still single family homes. Everything else is some form of a rental from dormitory to uh multifamily, duplex or some style. I know this is an apartment complex here and here, but we are having some of these have access across the back. It's a non paved road at this time.
Yeah, and so this, so the the, when we when we have this home change into and they're, I believe they're going to be requesting for probably dormitory, so our requirement is that everything needs to be paved um for those accesses, right? And so the concern is, well, should the one property owner have to pay for the that whole alleyway to be paved on there so they can have that that access?
And the reason it jumps to paving the whole thing is it would be rated as a one way because it's not wide enough for two way traffic. So for them to have full access to their parking lot and back out, they've got to pave that whole alley. Be able to have the correct parking requirements.
So that brings us to, okay, how do we, how do we look at, is there a potential solution that we, as the city council wants to look at? Do we look at change in that rule, um, which would open up probably a bigger can of worms in other areas of, well, I don't want to pave my parking lot. I'll just have this. And so so one thought um that we came thought of was what if we did an L I D and paved the alley, right? So everybody participated in that cost of the alley. We do have numerous, obviously, there's apartments that utilize that and there's also other homes along there that are utilizing it. Um, they were, they must have been put in before. I think they they have asphalt surfaces and then it just goes to the alley. So this alley isn't acting like a typical alley, I would say, behind residential neighborhoods. This is acting more like a driveway for parking lots.
Is it north, south, east?
Yeah, so the one where he's got the arrow on, that's the one we're primarily talking about. We did have, um, was it last year that someone came in on or two years?
Years ago.
So another one.
On this alley.
Yep.
But you also have two other alleys that are in the same situation. So we have four of those in the city that face these same challenges.
And the other concern that we look at with that is just with BYU Idaho's announcement of twenty six and and over. Um, as staff, we've been looking and discussing it to see, you know, what ramifications are those going to have and what which areas are we going to get more requests for homes to be converted into dormitory style housing. Now, one of the negatives with that is this is an area that was looked at years ago for hope for redevelopment and was rezoned to H R one or H R, is it two, H R two? And so that with with the increase of dormitory style housing in there would more than likely obviously push that off because the the values would be higher for someone to try and come in and purchase those and then redevelop it into a a higher density than what's currently there.
Keith, I have a question on this one. They are using that as a driveway and parking off in several of those apartments there. Are they grandfathered in?
Yes.
And so this, do purchase it, have to pave it?
Yeah, where they're doing the conversion and it creates a new use, they have to meet the current code. So they aren't grandfathered with that use.
And we have we talked to the rest of this alleyway owners or anything like that about L I D or?
No, no, it hasn't. We we just, that came in, that came in last last week or was it the week before that?
It's been two weeks.
And so so I came in and that's why we just, before we move and start talking, we wanted to see what councils thoughts and directions.
Familiar with this one because I used to manage apartments right there. So I know we use that for quite a few parking on the backside of
Yes.
apartment complex I managed and they they've done it for thirty years plus since I've managed there, but L I D.
I've got, I've got a question about it. So what would be required then to bring it up to code or whatever our requirements are now? Would would it need curb gutter, no nothing like that? Just pave it essentially, is that?
No, we're not sure. It's got to come to engineering standards.
So, so the reason why I I say that is just as soon as you pave it, the stormwater runoff is going to come up. That's on a hill. And so that's why I say it's not just paving. That's why I kind of stopped it because it, because I think storm drainage is going to have to take, in fact, I know some of those apartments along there, even with the gravel road when it's frozen and the snow starts melting, runs over into their their areas. And so so, yes, that would be an an added thing that would have to be taken into consideration.
Are there any underground utilities in that alleyway?
Um, so I'm not aware of underground, but I believe there's overhead.
Yeah, there's.
There's a power line that runs behind there. I know our garbage trucks, because we are, we have, our garbage trucks have to run through there as well to picks up the dumpsters.
And would this proposed L I D take in that east west piece, the T up top?
Yeah, it would need to. So that way everything would be paved and then that way it it brings it into compliance.
Yeah, you're definitely gonna have to look at stormwater.
Yeah, no, it's.
I manage there, so I guarantee you're gonna have to look at storm.
I've been up there before with the apartments and the runoff coming.
Here's my question. If the if we got to pave it because of the development, why are we gonna make everybody else loan that alley pay if they don't have anything to do with the development?
Well, it'd just be bringing it up to standards, right? So.
So we're getting down with every alley?
Well, I would say you'd want to, you would want to look at that if if people are going to be going down that that road. So you could look and say, do people want to have a pay? I mean, obviously, most of those places probably going to say, no, but why would, why would we want to pay for anything else? But once again, it's right at some point, right? Do you want to bring it up standard just to have it continue to be a gravel place? But, you know, and you could say, no, we don't want to do anything, right? This is a obviously a council decision. We're just trying to give you information and then that way you can make a determination of which way you would like us to proceed um with that.
We plow those alleyways?
Yep, yep. So we go through and plow and we grade them. So, I mean, I would say this one is is more egregious as far as it's not being treated like historical alleyways on residential areas, right? Because those very low volume cars, this, we have way more vehicles traversing this alleyway. That's why it's a little bit different than I would say than these other ones. Now, the other ones could go that way, especially with the announcement with BYU Idaho. And that's definitely a concern. Obviously, those are primed a little bit more, if you will, um, for people to get cars into backyards, right? And and be able to have the parking to allow for more uh people in the homes.
Keith, I Keith, I do have a a problem with having one development come in and enforce it upon everybody else, like what Mike said. Um, without talking to everybody and see if we get them on the same idea of this upgrade is now to our standards. Um, my suggestion would be is maybe go and canvas that, see what they say, see if they want to get them at the standards and not just try to force it on them.
Okay.
And sorry, can I ask a question? I know you probably already said this. I was just trying to like compute it all. So if we didn't, what would we have to change to just leave it as is and let them?
Let them do it? So the the regulation that stipulates that all parking needs to have a paved service all the way to our rightaways. Or I shouldn't say to our rightaways, to our roads, systems and that. And we're still looking at this to see if this was even dedicated as rightaway to us or as an alleyway. Um, we've went through back to nineteen forty and we haven't shown anything on that. Um, and so I've got our G I S department researching that. So they have to go through the books over at the county courthouse on that, so.
Because the easiest thing would be to just, if we already have other gravel alleyways, to just leave it that way, right? And let them do their thing.
Well, it's, it's, it's an easy thing, but it's it's a, it's a unique spot. I mean, I don't think you want to just open that up, right? And so that that's where you and and we probably want to have legal weigh in on, you know, what ramifications this have. That's right? We're just trying to discuss for all the all the options, but I definitely appreciate bringing up and say, well, here's an option. But, you know, what does that look like legally? And how does that? Because someone's going to come in and say, well, you allowed them to do it. Why won't you allow me to do it?
Yeah, I just feel like I need more info. I don't know about the rest of you, but I just feel like I need more information on this because an L I D for a whole street is a big deal, I feel like. So I need more information.
Okay, what information are you thinking you you need? I mean, obviously, we got Councilmember Erickson that says we'd like to see the the people, the property owners there and see if there's people, is that kind of what you're hoping to get?
Kind of a cost we're talking about is a big thing that I would want to know, like what kind of cost are we even?
Yeah, what estimated cost would be?
And I'm a little fuzzy on what you were mentioning earlier. Why are you doing the research in the books? What what answer are you looking for?
Well, to see if this is a remnant of something that was never, because a lot, what happens sometimes, I shouldn't say a lot of times, sometimes what happens is the county assessor's office, right? They just treat it as rightaway when there's not a parcel number to put to it. So they can, it's not a taxable area. Uh, we found that some of these areas in the past, when we went over some of these locations that were treated that way, that the city didn't have a rightaway too. And so we're looking into that to see where does, where do these actually fall?
So what if we discover that we don't have a rightaway here?
So there's two options that I look at. One is the council could say, we're going to keep doing what we're doing because right, we've done it enough times that basically by through a prescriptive easement, we've taken that over. Or the council could say, why do we want to keep grading and doing all these these things on here and and we're not going to do that anymore. So that's options. We've looked at some streets and we've said, no, we're we're not going to. options. We've looked at some streets and we've said, no, we're we're not going to do that. It's a it's gravel road. It's not built to our city's standards. So we're not going to take that responsibility over. So that would be the discussion with city councils and say, well, which option do we want to go? When we find out that information, now if it's been turned over to the city, then then that those wouldn't be on the table.
Okay, thank you. I was a little fuzzy on that.
Could be an option to pass an ordinance that differentiates alleyways and city streets as far as construction standards.
Um, yeah, yeah, you, I think you could do that. I don't know if you have. We probably want to look into that a little. When I see our attorney going like this, we want to look into that more. No, no, you don't. But once it becomes traversed heavily and then what kind of maintenance do you want us to continue to do, right? Because obviously the more vehicles on that alleyway, the more beat up, more potholes, things like that. Are we going to be in there more often? Grading out those those alleyways or that's that's kind of the maintenance side, I would say, is is where you know, you would want to weigh in and say, yeah, we want to be in there a lot more because gravel roads deteriorate obviously a lot faster than asphalt roads and you have a lot more maintenance if you're going to do it. Now, if you're not, if you're just going to say, you know, at the city council, we're going to plow it and we're going to come in once a year and grade it and that's it. Right? So there's there's different options you could look at for sure.
Currently, oh, sorry, I'm buttoning.
I I was just wondering, I think the individuals associated with the head, can we hear what they?
Did we make a comment?
Oh, are you are you on the alley here?
They're the ones looking at purchasing.
Oh, okay. Yeah, come on up to the microphone if you would, please. Say your name and address. Let us know what you think. This is pretty much a new subject for us, so I think we're all looking for.
So I'm Brad S. One. I actually live in Moody, three six sixty east, two thousand north, but I own a home on East Diner and I also own my office and five twenty-six person American circle. So I don't vote here, but I do pay taxes to this. So this parcel, and I'm not, I mean, I haven't looked at the records. I just looked at the 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 lots. It looks like there's twenty-one parcels on this alley. And from what I can tell, all but three of them are already apartments. So the home that we're looking at buying has been owned by the same individual. She passed away since it was built, I think in fifty-four. And the family that's trying to sell it to us says, so we're being penalized. Everybody else has changed to apartments and we're being penalized and can't sell our home and have apartments in the basement. Because we can't afford, because we can't afford to pave this alley, pay to pave this alley to meet the standard. And everybody else got in under the line because our mother lived to be ninety-four. So I know that that the son, I I believe when he talked to these guys, so I got three choices. I got to find a new buyer. I got to hire an attorney or I can't remember what he what he what he or what he said his third option was, but
I think he talked about paving the road.
Or pave or pave it all, pave the whole thing. Which seems, I mean, I I realize it seems unfair to go to everybody else and say, you've got to pay for your share of this alley. But it also seems fair to hold the two or three homes, and I believe there's only two that are already rentals hostage to not be able to become rentals and make them pay for the whole alley.
So so we'd want to be either grandfathered in with the rest.
It's
or or the LID is the other option because they've been using it.
Well, an LID actually seems like the fairest way to share the cost. I mean, if you, the traffic on that, that's got to be the busiest alley in the in the town, without any question. And it's not going to get less. And and I recognize
unpaved, busy, unpaved alley.
Yeah, and yeah, yeah, excuse me. Yeah, the city ones, the downtown ones are better. And I guess I think that I I understand it seems like, well, whoever are coming in for redevelopment, if you want to call it that, should pay for the cost. Well, it's not redevelopment.
We're just adding a parking lot on one lot.
Rent the basement. Everybody else is already renting their basements, so.
Yeah, questions, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, on this alley, I'm very familiar with this alley because I said I manage apartments there. This is totally different alley than what you look over by Harvard. Over by Harvard, like two or three cars go down there. This one is almost like a street of parking because every one of them on both sides use that for parking all the time. I mean, there's cars going down there like a city street almost.
Kind of seems like everybody that uses it should help pay for it. Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying that we need to talk to them, but
It wouldn't be fair to make us improve everyone else's property. Because, you know, just because the code says it's one way, we have to pave the whole thing. That's an improvement on everyone who's been using it for for years and and we have to pay the whole thing, even though we're only one lot on the entire, out of twenty-one, we're one.
And I totally agree with that. But as you look at this alley, this is totally different than one at Harvard or the one that that goes off of Second East. I mean, this one's used as a fully parking access all them as you go down it into most of those apartment complexes or most of the houses as apartments.
And and I would agree, right now it is. And we'll see what happens, obviously, with these these other ones, because I I could see changes happening on on those homes.
We have multiple people calling in and requesting dormitory. How can they set up dormitory? So we're going to see it in multiple places throughout the city.
Can I ask one more question? So when you're saying LID, are you talking about an LID for like the actual paving part?
Yep, the whole thing.
And so we haven't, like, they would all share it on the road part? Because we haven't done that that I've ever seen before.
Where that it hasn't been a paved surface that we went in on that.
And so what were the what are the percentages on that I've never seen?
So there was no, so generally, they they would pay for the the hundred percent of the road because the road wasn't put in, right? It wasn't put into our standards. Yeah, there's no cost. There wasn't any cost or something.
Thank you. Thank you, yeah.
Uh, yeah, probably something like that.
Hey, any other questions or it sounds like you just want some more information and and want us to kind of talk to these people and kind of find out what what their feeling is. Is that kind of the direction we're getting here? Any other moments about that?
Yeah, any additional, for me, any additional information would be helpful.
Yeah, and I'm just a little, I'm still confused because like, we've never made a neighborhood put in their own road before, right?
Any new neighborhood coming in, yes, they they pay for all of it.
Into their homes, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so this is different, though, definitely.
I'm just saying, it feels different to me.
It is a little different because it's an alley that's been there forever.
Yeah, it's been like so.
Yeah.
So. Yeah.
Different because it's
In a subdivision.
Yeah, so so how much would it, can we see how much it would cost to just have the city pave it? Don't we only have like four alleyways?
Yeah, we can see.
Yeah, I just
We'll put the other cost estimate. Because then that way
Yeah, I think that would be very helpful. Thank you.
All right, so that gives us some direction. Yep. So we'll just put some information together and then kind of get back with council and say, here's what we found out. And we, I wonder if it'd be best, well, I'm torn. What I'd love to do would be just to send them a letter and say, hey, we're going to have an open house, but I don't know if we'd get everyone because of apartment complexes and stuff like that. So maybe we just have to try and get phone numbers and make phone calls.
There's a lot of them are probably out of area owners.
Yeah, so maybe we'll just go that route is just trying to do some phone calls and then get their input on it. All right.
All right.
Thanks.
So I think that's, yeah, that's all we needed to talk about on that one. Just more of informational thing.
Okay. All right, that's we're done with item number ten then. So let's move on to item number ten B, which is a planning and zoning recommendation to approve the Teton View Estates Platte located at eleven fourteen North Yellowstone Highway, subdivided into fifty-six lots. Alan? What can you tell us about this?
This is a property out at the Teton Drive-In that they are proposing to well, the plat, as you can see up here, combination of townhomes along the front and the south side with apartment complexes in the back. They have met the standards that we set. Staffs reviewed it. Can be serviced serviced and meets all those standards. Took it to P and Z and they are recommending it to you for approval. So any questions that you have for me?
Any questions for Mr. Parkinson on the side?
Kind of mirror what they did on Thompson Farms?
Uh, there's Thompson Farms does not have any townhomes at this point. They had designed something into theirs for later on. The difference is theirs is a PUD. This is not. They're staying within just the standard normal of the zone. So they're not asking for any additional concessions.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have a comment other than I have a comment, not a question. I bring this up every time on that street. I'm going to bring it up again. We're looking at replacing that sewer line. We keep adding and adding and adding. We're already over capacity on that sewer line. Do we need to slow that down out there until we get the sewer line in? Because we keep just adding to it. That's what I'm worried about.
I'll let you address that, Keith.
Yeah, this won't be built in time before I get our sewer line in there. We were hoping by, I mean, obviously, we've bid out this line already, right? So we've already awarded that bid. They're in the process right now of boring or getting set up to bore underneath the river. And we would anticipate probably the lift station starting this fall for that. And so things should be in place for it, so.
I just, I just want to make sure infrastructure is there before. I bring up every time we add on that area as we go out that direction.
Yeah, and just just so you know, we met with the sugar officials and the Teton officials and kind of reviewed everything we needed to talk about to get that line replacement, you know, moving. And I think it was a really good meeting. Everybody was on the same page with what needs to be done. You know, their share that they're going to have to pay and all that kind of thing. So yeah, I think we're we're in a pretty good spot moving forward to get that done. So it should be done well before any of these need to be connected up. And and actually, that line, and correct me if I'm wrong, Keith, but it's not so much capacity. It's just the age and the falling apart of it, right?
Yeah, my deterioration of that line. So, yes, that's
The line we're going to put in going to be a bigger line, though?
Yes, yeah, yeah, we're increasing the capacity. We've based it on the sewer studies that we've done for the growth. And so that line will be big enough to handle that growth coming in as well as lift station with that.
Good. Any other questions about this? Okay, then I would entertain a motion to move forward on on item number B, which is recommendation to approve this plat.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of Teton View Estates Platte.
All right, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by council member Eric Erickson. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion passes. We will go ahead with that plat. All right, the consent calendar is items that are that are routine, such as the minutes from the March, let's see, it's just the minutes from the March nineteenth meeting because we don't have the twenty-fifth minutes done yet. We will get those done. And then the approval of the city of Rexburg bills. Is there a motion? Is there any questions or comments about any items on this before we move forward? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll make that motion, approve the consent calendar and pay our bills.
Thank you, council member Colin Erickson. Is there a second? Second by council member Johnson. Thank you. Any further comments? All in favor? Any opposed? All right. Motion passes, we will pay the bills and enter the minutes. All right, at this time, we do have a a an item on the agenda for an executive session as per Idaho State Statute seventy-four two oh six one J. This is to consider labor contract matters authorized under section seventy-four dash dash two oh six A one A and B in the Idaho code. So I would need a motion to move into executive session and a roll call vote. So is there such a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I still move that we move into executive session with the roll call vote.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Second by council member Chambers. Roll call vote, please, Mariana.
Council member Johnson.
Yes.
Council member Chambers.
Yes.
Council member C Erickson.
Yes.
Council member E Erickson.
Yes.
Council member Reese.
Yes.
Council president Walker.
Yes.
All right, that motion passes. We will move into executive session. So just for everyone's information, for executive session, we have to clear the room and we will come back into session after the executive session to adjourn. If you would like to stick around for the adjournment, you're welcome to do that. But at this point in time, we need to ask everyone to vacate the room and we will move into executive session. Thank you all for being here.